Welcome, everybody. Please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for attending. Let the record show all council members are in attendance. And my seat just went down about, I hope that's not a bad sign. It about gave me a heart attack. I thought I was stepping over. Sorry about that. If you want to address the council tonight, please step to the podium. There is a sign up sheet there. We need to record who spoke for the minutes. So if you please put your name and address down, that would be great. And we'll get to the public hearings fairly soon. With public hearings, you're allowed 10 minutes to address the council. Please make sure your comments are cumulative and non repetitive. In other words, don't get up and say, "I agree with what Joe said." When Joe gets done, if you agree with him, you can show your appreciation slightly. But we will start with the consent agenda. Is there a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda with one amendment to move item 4D to the end of the agenda so we can get through the majority of the business.
Like after six, you mean?
Yes, a second.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Tonight, we have four public hearings. Again, if you'd like to address the council, please step forward to the microphone, give your name and address for the record, and write your name and address down on the sheet. This is time and place for a public hearing as advertised on the matter of resolution 17-46. This resolution approves the mayor's budget for fiscal year ending July, I'm sorry, June 30th, 2018. Is proof of publication on file?
It is on file.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Is there anyone here wishing to address the council in regards to this matter?
My name is David Flavin, 3606 Avenue E. Okay, I guess I'm wondering basically how the 2016, 2017 budget is going. Is it on budget? Is it over budget or under budget?
Currently, it's showing, 2016 is showing a 13 and a half million dollar surplus. Revenues over expenditures. But don't be misled by that because 10 million of that is from the money that came from the Iowa Department of Transportation. And that is for West Broadway. And I believe 2 million of that was unanticipated, unanticipated building inspection fees from Google. So if you subtract those numbers out, it's about a million and a half under budget now, but it's early in the year and so.
Well, actually, you're late in the year because you're almost to the...
Yeah, there's...
You only have three more, three to four more months to go.
Yeah, yeah. It's over June 30th, so.
Because you have a different, you have a shortage of one, over $1 million in your own documenta, 1.8 million dollars. So I'm wondering where that 1.8 million dollars is coming from.
I'm curious where you're getting that number, but...
From your own budget, from your own documentation you put out. You have a 1.8 deficit. Just like this coming, your proposed one...
Can you give me a page so that I can...
Page four.
I'm not sure that, that's how our pages, our pages aren't numbered. What's the title of it?
Well, it's expenditures, general fund, and that, net general fund operations.
It's this page right here, I think it's where he's looking at.
And keep in mind, that's the general fund. That's not the overall budget. That's just the general fund portion of the budget.
Well, it has to be part of the budget.
It is, it is.
Okay, but you're, you're showing, you're showing revenues in here and you're showing expenditures. And when your revenues do not outweigh your expenditures, and not over it, you have a shortage.
You have to count all the accounts the city has. For example, if you, the city has more than one checking account. So you have to count all the different things together to get the net budget, not just one of them.
It's what's called...
Right, but I'm saying, I'm saying you have, you budgeted, you submitted a budget, a 1.8 million dollar deficit last year.
Yeah. I don't, I don't have the actual 17 budget, but I don't believe that's the case, but...
Well, you, okay.
There are multiple fund balances in each fund. For example, the debt fund, the TIF fund, the, the fund for sewer and, and refuge collection, all are different funds. And then they all flow together later on. As Mr. Ringenberg said, this is for the general fund. And I don't have that budget in front of me right now to tell you. I would tell you, as of the reestimated 2017, it's showing we are 13 and a half million more revenue than expenses overall in the budget for 2017. But again, I'd tell you that 10 million of that was for West Broadway and 2 million of that was unanticipated inspection fees. So at this point, I would tell you that we're a million and a half, give or take, to the good.
All right.
If I could, sir, was your question just pertaining to the, you mentioned 16, 17. Did you want the 17 budget or the 16 budget?
No, you have, you go by, your fiscal years are 16, 2016 through 2017. Okay, July 1st through June.
Yep.
Okay, now you, you put a budget out here, you documented it, and you put it out to the public. And that, now I'm asking you, where is 1.8 million deficit coming from?
I would tell you that we don't have a 1.8 million deficit currently.
The reason I asked the question was that the last full report for a fiscal year that we had was turned in last December for fiscal year 2016. And what that, what that budget report said was that overall revenues were 11 million dollars less than what was budgeted. Overall expenditures were 4 million dollars over the budget. And the total deficit for, for that fiscal year was 3.5 million, which was about 1.3 million more than was originally projected as a deficit.
Okay.
That's the last full year.
That was, that was the actual of 2015, 16?
That's the actual year. And I would tell you that 3.5 million, 3.7 of that million is attributable to depreciation in the sewer fund. At least, that's what we depreciated this year, 3.7 million, so.
Okay, but where's this money coming from?
It's a paper, it's a, it's a, it is a non cash item adjustment to the budget to reflect the depreciated value of the city's sewer infrastructure. And so there is no money associated with it.
When you put a document, when you put a document out like this, especially proposing this year, this coming up year of 2.1 million dollars deficit, better explain why.
I would...
Where's the money coming from to take, to take care of this 2.1 million dollars?
I would tell you, sir, that I would love to sit down with you and talk to you about it, but that is not what this budget shows in the least, and so...
You documented it. This is a documentation that was put out by this council to the public.
Yeah. There is, I don't, I don't know what this sheet is. I'm telling you that if you look at the general fund, it does not show that deficit. The general fund shows a $90,000 surplus projected. And the net expenses over revenues are about 8 million. Four and a half million of that come from the money that was paid by the Iowa Department of Transportation for West Broadway. Money recorded last year, expensed this year, and then 3.7 million in depreciation for the sewer funding.
That 10 million dollars should be used on the Broadway expansion. It's not part of the budget. It's for...
Four and a half million, I told you, was for the Broadway expansion this year, which is coming out of that 10 million dollars. So I don't know what else I can tell you, sir. I'd love to answer your question, but...
Then you're, you don't know what you, how to create your own budget, then?
Well, apparently, I do, because I'm answering the questions without looking at it.
You show a 2.1 million dollar deficit in the budget, in your proposed budget. Where are you getting the money to pay that? You cannot show a deficit.
If, if I can briefly record what we're preparing to tell the state as soon as the budget is approved, then we have to report some forms to the state that explain to them what our budget is. Based upon the forms that I have in front of me to answer your question, we currently have expenditures of 7.8 million dollars more than, than the reported revenue. That's just what the form reports.
Where's the 7 million dollars, 7 million dollars at?
Do it one more time for you. It is four and a half million of revenue for West Broadway was taken in, in 2017, but the expenses happened in 2018. That's called accrual accounting. We accrue when we receive the revenue and we accrue when we spend it. So we accrued in 2017, we're going to spend it in 18. So that money's in the bank, available for four and a half million of West Broadway. 3.7 million dollars of that deficit is attributable to depreciation for the city's sewer system. It's a non cash expense item to adjust the asset value of the sewer system. The difference, which is about 100,000, is because we have graduated in the sewer fee for sewer usage, and we did not budget enough to cover the sewer expense this year, but it gradually grows over several years, and we will get that back in out years.
I'm requesting an audit done on the Council of Us.
The audit, the audit was just completed, so we get you, it'll be online and you can check it out, so.
All right.
Thank you.
Don Angerath, 304 Glen Ave. I've got a smaller question for you. Looking at the rental inspections on page 26, as it came off of the internet there, it showed that there's a salary of 231,811 dollars and then $500 food allowance, which I don't know exactly what that food allowance is. I didn't see a food allowance in anybody else's budget, but of that, 231, back on page...
And that was last year's budget?
No, that's on your proposed fiscal year.
2017, I think, that one it says.
It's in the dark.
The budget we're working on now is 18. Because we work on a fiscal year, July 1st becomes 2018 for fiscal purposes.
Okay, so this is, this is last year, then?
Yeah, and I don't know what...
Well, then I'll, I'll just rearrange the question a little bit.
Okay, I don't know what the food allowance is.
And I think part of that's what he was talking about, too. He was looking at, at this figures here rather than new ones. Because this is the only thing I could find online. I couldn't find the new one out there. He must be hiding that one someplace. But anyway, you show that there's a 225,000 for this last year that came in on the rental inspections. Now, you showed on here that the cost for the rental inspections was 352.
That's correct.
On there, which is more than what you took in. But you associated with that, how much of this salary that you paid the rental inspectors went to, is prorated, however, to the rental department as opposed to the owner occupied inspections.
There are different inspectors for both now. The budgeted expense for the rental inspection, 350,000. The budgeted revenue, 250,000. And so it's showing a deficit of about 100,000. The proposed inspection fee that was presented by the council, or presented by the mayor last year, was reduced by the council.
Right.
So it's not cash flowing today.
So am I supposed to read between the lines that you're looking at an increase in fees for the registration, then?
That would be at the discretion of the council. I would think, I would recommend that because it's, the, the program is not being paid.
But now, aren't these same three inspectors inspecting both the rental properties and the owner occupied?
I don't believe so.
Completely separate program, and that's why they're broke out. Remember, we talked from the beginning, they had to track it separately. So that page where you're looking at...
Yeah, but I thought it was all being split and prorated down.
Not anymore.
So who are the inspectors that do the owner occupied?
I don't know the names off the top of my head, but there are three of them.
There's three of them also?
There's the secret administrative assistant that follows up. And then I would assume some portion of the department's head salary is allocated to that, which is Steve Carmichael, so.
Okay, so he's over both of those?
Yep.
Yep, that's accurate.
Now, then, the 600,000 for the building inspections, which is, be Carmichael's group and would be the owner occupied. From what I recall, you do a lot more rental inspections than you do owner occupied inspections. But why is the budget...
But they also, they also inspect commercial buildings. And so, you know, it's Google, it's new commercial buildings.
So that's all included in there, too?
Yes, sir.
Construction, if they have to, we have to go out and inspect all the...
Okay, I just need a little clarification as to where those figures came from. Thank you.
You bet, thank you. Four rental inspectors, I guess, now. Any other questions? Anything from the council?
I move to approve.
Is there a discussion?
Oh, excuse me. I moved to approve, I apologize, amend my motion with the following changes. Number one, the city of Council of Us is projected to receive 2,871,000 from the State of Iowa Sales Tax Fund. These funds were reclassified within the Special Revenue Section of the budget from local option sales tax to other state grants and reimbursements. Two, bond revenue was lowered by 1,880,550. Three, capital project expense was lowered by 1,750,000, which eliminates funding of additional street and sidewalk repairs for 1 million and eliminates the construction of a salt dome facility for 750,000. Four, eliminated special revenue expense for the purchase of heavy equipment in the amount of 355,552 dollars.
One second.
Clear as mud. What happened is we had allocated more bond revenue than what we actually had identified by Councilman Ringenberg. And so we had to make adjustments in our spending so that the ballot, the budget would balance and not be a deficit budget. Any other discussion?
Yes, if we're entering into a discussion, yes, I would like to make a number of points. As the mayor pointed out, these, these amendments were necessitated by a number of questions because things just were not adding up. And, and there were, you heard there are a number of amendments in order to correct a number of errors in what was being reported.
I believe it was one error.
Well, no, it's your, your chief of staff reported a number of errors, but that being as, as it may, what I'm, what I'm left with here is having to explain to a gentleman like Mr. Flavin who spoke earlier is that he was referencing what was essentially old budget numbers from the original draft that was, that was published. The latest round of corrected numbers came out on the 8th of March, which would have been last Wednesday. As of Saturday, I did not see the new budget numbers posted on the city website. So if there's confusion out there, I join your ranks in, in that confusion. There are a number of explanations for why numbers appear the way that they do. But ultimately, I'm left to, to read the city's own report that it's proposing to, to give to the state. And whenever you, you have 8.7, I'm sorry, 7.8 million dollars in corrected expenditures exceeding the corrected revenues, in my vocabulary, that's called a deficit. And where those funds are coming from is out of the city reserves, which is a fairly typical political technique for covering your deficit. The county just announced a budget to do the same thing. Now, I want to be very clear in this, that, that the mayor has, has published things and said, said a number of things that suggests that the proposed tax increase that he's asking you to absorb is necessitated by the construction of our new police station. Having read the documents presented by our finance director last June, that is not the case. Last June, he gave each of us a memorandum backed up by charts, and he provided explanation as to how he arrived at this point. And he was very clear that we had a problem with respect to lost or local option sales tax revenues. That had to be corrected in this budget. We also had a problem concerning the revenue that comes from the sale of bonds or bond debt capacity. And what he said is that we have a problem in this city because we have been borrowing from our bond sales to pay for prior projects. In other words, we've been overspending and robbing from bond sales in order to cover past debts. And that is a huge problem. Now, he proposed two ways to handle this problem. In his memo and in his charts and in his discussion with us, he recommended, number one, we could cut back on our spending. We could make adjustments in the capital improvement program. And at that time, adjustments were made for the last capital improvement program that was approved. His second remedy involved a tax increase. And if you track his charts and recommendations, the current proposed tax increase pretty much parallels, not exactly, but pretty much parallels the recommendation he made at that time. He also stated that a second, larger tax increase would be required for next year in order to make all the numbers work. I asked the chief of staff in an email if that was the city's intent. And she replied, "No," that the remaining balance to pay for the CIP would be drawn from the next bonding period. In other words, we will be returning to the same practice that Mr. Jordette cautioned us against. I again find this to be very problematic. Now, prior budget estimates, as we've, as we've illustrated, don't always pan out the way they, they do, or that we hope that they do. And we noted the problem in fiscal year 16, which was the last year that we drew up a budget without a finance director. And here we are again. And if the budget deficit is as underestimated for this budget as it was for fiscal year 16, we have a tremendous problem that's about to break. Having said that, we're compounding with some continuing bad practices and bad estimates. We again continue to count on such risky funds as red light camera revenue. The existence of red light camera revenue will be coming up on the floor of the Senate, of the Iowa Senate, pretty, pretty soon, because that bill is coming up for a vote. At the same time, we are, we are spending every penny that we receive from the emergency levy. We, we spend it as part of our regular payment for, for expenses. We just roll that into the budget. Now, to me, the emergency fund is called an emergency fund for a reason. That is, we're saving up in the event that we have an emergency like we did not so long ago. And for us to be continually rolling that into, into usual operating expenses without setting aside as the voters might expect, I find that to be more than a little surprising. So in balance, when we make decisions about spending and about taxation, we're affecting more than just city projects or the health of city programs. We are also impacting the lives and futures of people who live here, who must pay those taxes. And we are going to have some very steep increases because of decisions that are being made right now by our county assessor. And, and so in this environment, I find to compound those problems with further increases in spending, with further increases in taxes. I'm sorry, I just find it irresponsible, and I have to vote against it.
All right. So let me answer the questions by addressing your concerns. And I'll start with the accurate things that you said. We are using red light camera revenue in the budget. And quite frankly, there's a possibility that the state legislature would do away with that. And I pointed that out on day one, and if they do that, this body will have to make some serious considerations. But I'm hearing that they're not going to address it this year. That is the end of the truth. The rest of the story, and so we started with Mr. Jordette's concerns in a memo that he put out on June 13th, 2016, when he asked me, "Do you want to increase the city's debt levy?" And I said, "I do not. We've been keeping it at $2.20. Please keep it there." And so he was concerned. He said, "When viewed in a longer timeframe, is a reduction in the city's capacity to generate funds for projects in the program unless the property tax rate is increased?" And what that means is we would have to increase the city's debt levy. He goes on to say, "This means that either the capital improvements program," and remember what Mr. Ringenberg said, because there's a ring of truth to it. "This means that either the capital improvements program must be adjusted to depend less on bond dollars, or the tax rate for debt retirement must increase to pay the additional bond dollars." So what he's saying is that, I've got a history here that goes back to 2001. $2.20 is the lowest the debt levy's ever been. I think it's been consistently 2.20 since 15. At one time, it got as high as 3.68, but currently is 2.20 with 16 on for the police fire station, which generates about 500,000, which is what's needed for the debt retirement. That's the only increase in your property tax levy in the last 12 years. A 16 cent increase associated with the, the police station bond levy that was voted on by the people. So Councilman Ringenberg goes on to infer that we're drowning in debt. I would tell you that in the nine largest cities in the state of Iowa, Council of Us is second lowest in that they use 33.45, or 43% of their debt capacity. The only city lower is Iowa City. And next in the rung above us is Ames at 35%. And both of those are Regent Schools, and, and they have other funding sources, so they can artificially support themselves. If you go to the top of the list, Dubuque, Iowa uses 81.65% of their debt levy. Des Moines uses 77.0... Des Moines uses 77.08% of their debt levy. Cedar Rapids, 70.72. Davenport, 60.74. Sioux City, 60.55. Waterloo, 52. We are 33.43%. So we are substantially below all the other communities in the state of Iowa. So these assertions are absurd. And the city is being managed well. I give Colonel Ringenberg credit, and probably shouldn't, because it gets thrown back in my face, he found an error in the budget. One error. But one error, when you're putting together budgets, create adjustments that have to be made. So multiple adjustments had to be made. We calculated, we double counted some bond revenue that was close enough to what the amount of state flood mitigation revenue was, that it didn't show up. And he caught that, to his credit. When he caught that, it then took us a series of adjustments to correct that. But I would tell you, I think the budget's right on the money. For those who don't know, two years ago, we had a finance director who retired three years ago. We hired a new one last year who did the budget, that you don't like, but that's the budget he did. And this year, unfortunately, our finance director died. So we don't have a CPA on staff. Wendy Schultz and Patty Hendricks did a great job in putting together this budget. You can make all the false assertions you want to make. It happens every year at this time. It's like getting a spring cold. I'm used to it. But none of those things you said are even remotely true.
Well, that's an interesting perspective, Mr. Mayor. And first of all, I don't like having my integrity impugned.
Well, then, don't impugn it yourself, then.
So let me again read from the memorandum and supporting documents that Mr. Jordette gave. In fact, I jotted down some direct quotes that parallel with his comments in his memorandum. And he told this council during a recorded session that the levy will have to increase greatly in 2019, then drop off. And his objective was to stay at a levy rate of about 2.45 for that bond debt levy rate, which is considerably more than what we have right now. And I have copies of the memo.
He did two projections with that. One was the 2.2, keeping it the same. One was the 2.45, which he was recommending that we go to. Now, the council can do that if they want, but that's real tax dollars to people. And I said, no, 2.2, and stay at 2.2. And your statement that the increase was not attributable to the police station couldn't be further from the truth.
Well, we seem to want it both ways here. Because your chief of staff, when I asked her about the same questions, she said, well, no, we don't want to raise the taxes next year, but we will have to take it out of future bond revenue. So again, if, either way, we're either taking it out of increased taxes, or we're stealing from future bond revenue.
No, we're not stealing from anything. And you know the answer to this, because we gave you the answer. Because of some bonding that didn't happen, the city is in a situation where there will be no, if we want to keep it at 2.2, there will be no bond revenue available next year. Now, we can address that two ways. We can not bond for additional projects and skip a year. The next year, and it's just because of how the cash flow works on the debt levy, the next year, we have $9 million available in debt revenue. And we have asked our bond counsel to common size that, to level out those payments. Is it possible to take $4.5 million of the 2019 debt and use it towards projects in 2018, borrowing enough to make the payment? And I grant you, that is borrowing ahead. But if we need the money and need the projects, can we do that? Does it cause any detrimental effect? Will it affect our bond rating? We've been assured it won't. That's the question she answered when you asked the question.
And now that I've been interrupted again, and my character's been impugned.
Well, you were interrupting me, I believe, but...
Please allow me to continue to read from Mr. Jordette's memo. And the third paragraph, it says, and I quote, "In some prior years programmed, the actual bond sale dollars were less than the amounts that were budgeted for the program. The budgeted amounts were still expended, which required reimbursement of those costs from future bond sales and other city resources." So if that's not stealing from Peter to pay Paul, I'm not sure how you define it.
I don't know how you can call that stealing. What happened is that a bond issuance that we expected to have been issued was not issued. And so that caused a problem. It's caused a logjam, which causes the problem I just alluded to, which means that potentially we can't do any bonding in 2018 and can do 9 million in 2019. But there is a solution, if we actually have to need to bond for projects in 2018. I don't know that we do. We went 2016, we didn't bond for anything. So, you know, I don't know.
I'm making an attempt here to conclude my remarks.
Well, you rattle off so much stuff that just is so untrue that I can't keep up with it. And I don't want these people to start believing what you're saying has any sense of legitimacy.
Well, okay, you point to the legitimacy of your debt levy numbers.
You know, you went right back to the same number this gentleman said, that we're 7.8 million in the hole, and that's not true. We've got funding of $4.5 million for West Broadway, and 3.7 million is depreciation. So we're not in the hole.
Mayor, line 32 of the report that you proposed to file as soon as this is published, for the 2018 budget, revenues over, or revenues over/under expenditures, there's a negative 7.833.
Mr. Ringenberg, go to reestimated 2017 and look at the $13,520,000, which includes $10 million in West Broadway money from the Iowa DOT, which pays $4.5 million for a 2018 Phase 1 West Broadway project, which then makes that column positive. The rest is an accounting entry, and...
I'm sorry, but that, making the current year into a positive from the past year, I've got news for you. Your deficit for the prior year was a lot worse, so a lot of that got ate up.
I didn't go to law school, you didn't go to business school. So I don't know, at this point, I can tell you anymore, but...
So now, for numbers, you extolled the fact that we have a low debt levy rate, and that you're raising that rate is reasonable.
Yes, sir.
One very compelling fact for me is if you look at the overall levy rate, and when you get your tax bill, it doesn't break it down by fund, you get one bill. And the overall levy rate for the city of Council Bluffs, not for the county, not for the school district, our levy rate is larger than all of those other cities that you discussed here tonight.
Not true. Absolutely not true. But close. I would tell you that Waterloo's levy rate is higher, $17.76. Council Bluffs, $17.75. Des Moines, $16.92. Davenport, $16.78. And frankly, it's a two-sided formula. Part of the formula is levy, the other part is valuation. It pretty much costs the same thing, the same amount to run the city of Council Bluffs as it does Iowa City. The difference is Iowa City's property value is higher, and so they can charge less. Iowa City's levy is $16.65. So it's not dramatically lower. It's a dollar per thousand of taxable value, which on a home of $100,000 in value, you pay taxes on $57,000. So it's a dollar times 57, $57 difference between Council Bluffs and Iowa City annually for your city taxes. So I don't know. You know, I guess we can go back and forth, and you can make something up, and I can tell the truth, and we'll see how that works.
How can I top that show?
Well, you just can't by making statements that aren't true. And we do it every year. Last year, there was 21 misstatements that I got off the Ringenberg report and read down 21 times, and every one of the 21 was wrong.
At this point, you know, it's kind of like, numbers don't lie. People can read for themselves. If it were posted online, hopefully, when it does get posted, y'all can read this and decide for yourselves.
And I please would encourage you to do that. Any other discussion?
Marcy, can you just clarify that it was posted, or was not? It was posted, correct? Just so we...
The amended budget?
I don't know that the amended budget that we changed as of Thursday has been posted.
I just made the motion to...
Yeah, I had been talked to by the mayor about how we should handle the amendments that were coming up. And I recommended that we did not want to put out a second budget that conflicted with the first one until the amendments were made tonight. Essentially, the process laid out by the state code is that you can amend the budget at the time of the public hearing, so long as you do not change your bottom line.
Well, I want to speak in favor of the budget. You know, budgeting particularly for a government that spends a couple hundred million dollars, a quarter of which comes from your, and my, local property taxes, and the other three quarters coming from various other funds, many of which you pay to other government entities, like the federal and state governments, among other things. It's a complicated process. There's a lot to do. Everything that we do looks like pork or unnecessary spending unless it happens to be the one thing that you like. And we all like something, and we all maybe dislike some things. But, you know, it would be easy for me to find fault, or to pick out one or two lines that I would have done differently if I had been the mayor, and I'm not and don't want to be. But I have to look at it as, I think our job really is to look at it as a whole. And as a whole, does it make sense? And first of all, you know, will I agree with anybody, including the mayor, on 100% of everything? Of course not, because if two people agree on everything, at least one of them's not thinking, right? That old saying, it's true. But on the whole, looking at it, do I think the numbers are honest? Absolutely, I do. The numbers do add up. Depreciation, those various expenses that, you know, I don't own a business, but I have had some experience with spreadsheets in my time in government, and on various boards and nonprofits and other things in this community. So I've learned quite a bit, even though that wasn't what I learned to do as a trade. The numbers do add up. If you own a business, the government lets you, on your taxes, depreciate a certain amount of your inventory or your building. Anybody who owns a business will know about that. You may not necessarily, if you're like me and don't own a business, and haven't volunteered for a lot of different boards over the years, and learned, like I didn't know, I don't think any of this is intuitive. I think it's tough to learn. But bottom line, it adds up. And the only increase in this budget, you know, when we all voted unanimously, all of us, last spring recommended to you that you vote to increase taxes to pay for a new police station. You know, we talked a lot about, and there were some strong disagreements about particularly where it went, and I was on the losing side of that, but we needed, oh, well, we needed a police station, and in the end, I lost one vote, but the main thing passed, and that's what matters, is that the goods for the public's done. And, you know, when we were talking about how it's going to increase taxes, this number of dollars per year on a $100,000 house, or this much on a $50,000 house, or this much if you're fortunate enough, as some folks are not, to have a $200,000 house, you, this is how much your taxes would go up.
Yours is 300, right, Nate?
In my mind, yes. Yes, in my mind only. I wish, I wish. But no, I appreciate it. We need humor in times like this. We do. Break the moment, thank you. But bottom line, we all knew what we were doing. I don't think any of us, when we were voting for the police station, thought we were just increasing, we were just giving the local government the okay to go spend 20 million. We were raising it. We made that very clear to everyone. Even on, again, the location, that was a big issue that I lost on. But I was very clear, even during that debate, even though I was on the losing side of that part of it, that this was going to raise taxes. And I supported that, as did a super majority of you, and me. I believe all of us, I take us at our word, that when we said we were going to vote for it, I'm sure all of us up here did. That's the only increase in the budget, in your net taxation increase. Now, I know, some people's, mine didn't, again, my house doesn't seem to appreciate, but some people's, their taxes, their valuation went up a lot. And I know that affects your tax rate, and it's tied to that really convoluted formula where you're in my house, or tied to the production value of egg land. Does it make sense? No, frankly. But Des Moines controls that. The county sets that tax rate, as they have to. I'm not criticizing them, that's their job. I don't envy them, as the assessor, just doing their job. But bottom line, the part that the six of us up here can control, the only net increase, so certain things we spend more on a given year, certain things we spend less, but the overall number, what it's going to cost you, is a number I imagine you care about. That number that we set, other than the police station, is not going up. It just isn't. That's the part we control. There's a lot of things that aren't being filled in this budget, things are getting, even things are getting mowed less. There are a lot of things that we get emails from folks where they understandably get mad, well, why isn't this faster? Why does this over here look like junk? Why is this? Well, we're trying to cut back where we can in a budget that's a couple hundred million. And so I think overall, it's a fair budget, and it's an honest budget. And like I say, the mayor and I don't agree on everything, and we have our rounds from time to time on issues, on issues. Not personally, on issues. But on the whole, it's honest, and it's a fair budget. And I don't want to become like DC, or I used to just say DC, but now Des Moines, unfortunately, as well, appears to have come that way. I think it's a fair budget, and so I support it, and I'd like to think that we could get back to issues.
I support the budget also. I went through each, especially the expenses, to see if any department had increased their budget by a tremendous amount. If they hadn't, how much did it go down, or how much did it go up? And it doesn't take much, if you go through this line by line, to see that every department did their very best to either hold or go down. There were areas that had to be cut. I mean, I could see where some of the training expenses for fire and police had gone down. They're trying to hold back those costs as much as they can. You know, this council, this is my sixth year with the budget, and this is the first time that there's even been an increase. And of course, that increase has been set, it's because of the police department, and that was voted on. If the police department wasn't being built, I would venture to guess there'd be no increase. We've tried every single year to hold steady on what that levy is. And I would also say, you know, that we only control that one piece of the levy. So when I look at what I pay in taxes, and I've told many people this, and again, I'm like Nate, my house isn't a $200,000 house, but what I pay in taxes every year, the city of Council Bluffs, not the schools, not the county, but to the city of Council Bluffs, it covers my fire, my police, my snow removal, streetlights, all of those things, cost me less per month than my cable bill. So, you know, when we can hold that levy down, and we can give you all of those things, your city parks, all of those things that we provide to us, the citizens, for less than my cable bill every month, it's really hard to get that upset about my taxes in that single area. And I realize as a whole, every year they go up, just like my insurance goes up. It's just the way it is. But, you know, this city has done a tremendous job in holding those costs back. And again, I just want to reiterate that when you take in money last year for things that are going to be spent this year, so we just, you saw today, broke ground on the first segment of West Broadway, but we got that check last year. So you have to account, you have to do the accounting. And that's where the deficit is, is that that money went into the account last year, but the expenses are being realized this year. So I don't understand, you know, why anybody would believe that we have a deficit budget. We don't. We had to depreciate the sewer system, and we had to account for the money last year that's being spent this year on West Broadway. That's the total sum of the deficit.
In the 2016, that said we had a huge, we did a terrible job of budgeting last time that I budgeted, shows a net loss for the year, $3,584,960, or $32. I don't know exactly what the depreciation figure was for the sewer system. I know this year was 3.7. If it was in that ballpark, that means that we had a surplus. And my... And my recollection is, I missed that budget on 160-some million-dollar budget by $64,000, which is three tenths of one thousandth of a percent. And one of the reasons I didn't want to budget this year, because I'll never get that close again. That's how close it was to the good in 2016. So again, the assertion that we have a huge deficit in 2016 is just false.
If I may, just briefly return to Mr. Watson's comments, just to clarify something. And I think I understand what he means, and I take him in good faith. He said that in approving the referendum for the police station, we agreed to a tax increase. Just to be clear about that, there was not a tax increase. It proposed on the budget referendum itself, it was seeking the voters' permission to issue $20 million in bonds.
So how do you pay for that? By increasing the debt levy, which we issued the first 7.5 million. And towards that repayment, which is a 20-year repayment, we'll repay about $521,000 per year, which 16 cents generates. And if you do the math rounding for simplification, we borrowed 7.5 million. In 20 years, we'll pay back 10 million. Think about your mortgage. That's kind of how it works. You pay more than what you borrow, and so those numbers work out to appropriate numbers. Next year, we'll budget the additional 12.5 million. We'll bond for that. When we talked to the city about the police station, we talked about, depending on what the interest rate environment was, somewhere between 51 and 55 cents per thousand in valuation. You're seeing the first 16 cents on about a third of the money we borrow, a little more than a third. And so, you know, those numbers are working right out to where we told you. And so, please, don't go home and be concerned that there's some shenanigans afoot, because there is not.
But my point to that is, if all this was true, and you decided at that point that you would raise taxes in order to pay for the $20 million in bonds, then why was that not placed on the ballot?
It said to...
Issue the bonds.
20 million in debt. And we have issued 7.5 million to date. Next year, we'll issue 12.5 million. When added together, that's 20 million in debt. That will be enough debt to build the police station, which the estimated cost is 20 million. And then we will repay the debt. You don't get issued debt and not repay it. You know, that's a pretty basic concept.
All the flyers, everything that we did, all the programs that I went to, every single one of them showed what it would increase the levy by. So that, there was no misunderstanding that there was going to be an increase in the levy. And hope, you know, if need be, I can go back and see if some of that's still online. But everything we did, I mean, we had charts, depending on the value of your home, what your taxes would go up. So there was no, that was very open and...
If you could send that to me, I'd appreciate it, because the flyer that I'm looking at here, that was reviewed in city email traffic, talks about the $20 million in bonds, and it doesn't say anything about, that's what it would cost based upon the $20 million in bonds, but there's nothing in here about a tax increase. Nothing.
Well, if we're bonding for 20 mil... Okay, well, I will look. I've got those flyers. I know I kept a folder on it. They were taken to all of the public meetings, and so, no problem.
I'll tell you a little bit. As Nate said, we all bring some different expertise up here to this council. I do own a small business in town, and I'll tell you that, and a lot of this was done, I mean, I think you said 12 years, the debt, or the debt levy hasn't gone up, or the...
Yeah, more than that. The levy history I have goes back to 2001. So this is the 16th year where the debt levy hasn't, or I'm sorry, the 17th year where the debt levy has not gone up. And it may be longer than that, it just goes back to 2001.
Being in a small business, I would say, and I'm not by any means saying, I'm not a financial guru, but, and I'm not telling anybody that we're going to raise taxes or different things like that, but I know, cost goes up. We can't just keep keeping the debt levy at, you know, the same every year. I mean, I think at some point, we are proud of that, and I think that's something to be proud of, but eventually, there has to be some give. That 16 cents, I think it is, I mean, we talked about that 16 cents a lot during the police station. That is what, it's going up at this point, but owning a small business, your costs go up. You have to increase your price of your goods or whatever it is. So I'm not saying we need to raise taxes, but if you keep it the same all the time, eventually, it's going to be a big number, and everybody's going to be like, whoa, this ain't right. So to me, it makes sense a little bit. Maybe raise it a little bit periodically, but to stay the same, common sense to me says that's hard to do and manage. Increase costs of fire, safety, police, and a number of different things, obviously, that goes into the budget. So that's just a little bit from my take of it. I don't, I don't think we can stay the same forever, and I know we're proud of that, and we talked about that a little bit. I mean, it is, it's nice to say, but that's, it's hard to maintain a budget that does balance if we don't increase a little bit from time to time.
Anything else? All right, we have a motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign.
Nay.
This is time and place for a public hearing for, as advertised on the matter of ordinance 6285, an ordinance to amend the zoning map as adopted by reference in section 15.02.070 by rezoning lots 2 through 20, Yosemite Gardens, from R1, single-family residential, to R2, two-family residential, as defined in chapter 15.09, as proof of publication on file.
It is on file.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Is there anyone here wishing to speak to the council in regards to this matter? Seeing none, what's the council's pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign.
Motion to waive third.
Second.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. This is time and place for a public hearing, as advertised on the matter of ordinance 6286, an ordinance to amend chapter 15.24, supplemental use and site development regulation by amending section 15.24.060, parentheses, 3, yard exceptions and permitted intrusions into required yards, as proof of publication on file.
It is on file.
Has anyone, is anyone wishing to speak to the council in regards to this matter? Seeing none, what's the council's pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. This is time and place for...
Motion to waive third, excuse me.
Second.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign.
You're going to move to the resolutions?
We moved that to the end.
Okay, we're putting that at the end. All right, Marcy, take them away.
Resolutions, resolution 17-54, continued from February 27, approving the capital improvement program for fiscal years 2017 to 18, through 2021 to 22.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there a discussion?
This again, pertains to the future planning for capital improvements. And in order to have a good plan, you need to make sure that you're looking far in the future so that your wish list aligns up with your financial capabilities. And as was already pointed out, that we, adjustments had to be made into fund revenue streams in the amount of bond debt, as well as local option sales tax revenue. Number of adjustments were made as a result of those budget changes in the capital improvement program, as well as other changes being made in prior years. Suffice it to say that, looking out into the future, we have some awfully big projects that have to be done without having a really good idea of where the money is going to come from. And that causes me more than a little concern, because when you begin to make adjustments, the adjustments always don't quite work out in reality as they do in paper. Although a number of those adjustments have been made in, well, I presume that all of them have been made in good faith, but I question the wisdom of many of those adjustments. The most noteworthy was the omission of Public Works Project 1801, which is the removal of citywide street and sewer repairs. So if that gets your attention like it got me, that's telling me that we're not going to program street and, I'm sorry, street and sidewalk repairs.
You're going to say, you're making me come after you again, so...
Street and sidewalk repairs is now out of the budget, or out of the capital improvement program for the next year, because again, reading black and white, it was there in the previous iteration of the CIP proposal, and as of 8 March, it is missing.
And it's miscellaneous, street and sidewalk repairs. They're not designated for any specific project. They were budgeted in case there was a need. We do have reserves. If there is a need, but we took them out of the budget because we needed to balance the budget. And so there is no line item for miscellaneous street and sidewalk repairs. There is budget items for specific related street projects.
How it was originally worded in the first CIP that you put out did not contain the word miscellaneous. It was just simply citywide street and sidewalk repairs.
Yeah. Some antics. Sure. But you get five minutes.
Do I need to sign back in? Can I just state my name?
You don't have to sign again.
Yes. Yes, your name's okay. It's a separate item.
Okay. David Flavin, 3606 Avenue E. All right, I just want to clarify this, okay? So I'm going to go back. I checked all your agendas and all that stuff, from the top to bottom, and I found the budget in February 13, 2012. That's what I printed off. I didn't have any updated copy. That's what I was looking at.
That predates me.
Okay? All right, now, to what I saw today in your documentation, Annette, I would like to know what local option sales tax means.
That is the one cent. When you buy an item at a retail store in Iowa, you pay seven cents. Five cents of that, seven cents per dollar, or seven percent of the purchase price. Five cents, or 5% of that, goes to the state of Iowa. And that state of Iowa collects revenues through state income tax, gaming tax, and sales tax. They're their three primary sources of revenue. Then there is a penny for the kids, and that used to be collected locally, now it's collected statewide. And the other penny goes to local government, and this is divided between the city, the county, and other governmental jurisdictions in the county. And so that is the local option. And the reason they use that terminology is, communities had the option, Des Moines does not have a local option sales tax. Communities had the option to vote in a one-cent local option sales tax. When we voted that in in 1988, it was voted in specifically to be used for streets and sewers. And so that's what all ours is used for. Other communities have different things. Des Moines, not Des Moines, but Sioux City, half of theirs, excuse me, goes to to property tax reduction. So one of the reasons they can have a little lower property tax than we do. When we put that in, we were doing the division of the combined storm and sanitary sewer system. It ended up being about $160 million project. And so we felt, the voters felt, because it was voted on by the people, it wise to spend that on streets and sewers. And so in some case, the reason they included streets, some cases, to get the sanitary sewer, you got to tear up the street. And so they want to be able to use the money to put the street back when they repaired the sewer.
Okay, I would like to know who and what makes up the other programs.
On a revenue side?
Yes.
There are lots of different sources. Grants, which comes from the Iowa West Foundation primarily, and that is several million dollars a year. Wendy, can you help me with the other ones? Because this is one of Al's questions, I know that we answered for him.
Gaming, Iowa West, so it's something different, I said other federal funding.
Hotel motel. And so it's a culmination of multiple revenue sources.
And you don't have to list that?
They are listed... No. They are listed in the, this form that has citywide revenues, and it does show those in that form, which I think is online now.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, you were referring to your budget details, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, in my understanding from Wendy, was that that was not updated, as was the state reports?
Budget detail's probably not been updated since the changes we made on Thursday. I'm assuming that's correct. But it does have the revenues in there, and has the revenues in there accurately, so...
And if I may, to be clear, until I made the motion to make that happen, and until that vote passes, it has not happened. So that it doesn't show up in documents yet.
Yeah.
It has not yet happened.
Yeah.
It may not.
The budget happened, we already thought of it.
Well, until this meeting, excuse me, yes, yes, yes. Sorry, thank you.
Anything else on that? All right, I believe we have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign.
Nay.
Resolution 17-57, authorizing a joint application to the Iowa Economic Development Authority by the City of Council Plus and Rivers Edge Apartments LLC for workforce housing tax incentive program benefits.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign.
Resolution 17-58, authorizing a joint application to the Iowa Economic Development Authority by the City of Council Plus and BP Quality Homes LLC for workforce housing tax incentive program benefits.
Motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign.
Applications for permits and cancellation, 6A, B, and C inclusive.
Motion to approve 6A through C inclusive.
Second.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. All right, and I assume many of you are here for West Broadway. If you're not, that's the last item on the agenda, so if you want to slip out, you certainly can. This is time and place for a public hearing, as advertised on the matter of resolution 17-60, a resolution to modify the corridor master plan for the reconstruction of West Broadway that was approved by this city council on October 10, 2016, by eliminating all medians but adding thereto such aesthetics and enhancements as deemed appropriate by this city council. As proof of publication on file.
It is on file.
Have any protests been received, any written protest?
None received.
Is anyone... Is anyone here tonight wishing to address the council in regards to this matter? Tom, can you give us your name and address for the record then?
Tom Riley, 132 West Graham Avenue. I just kind of want to talk a little bit about the nature of a gift. I've listened to debate on West Broadway. Matt, you know, we've attended meetings for over three years. Plenty of opportunity for public input. I agree with both sides debating the issue. Lots of important points to be made on either side. But I want to discuss the gift that is being proposed that we receive, and how it affects us as a community, and why it's important to recognize that when we do receive a gift, that that gift be something that unifies us. And we know what happened to the public art on South 24th Street Bridge, and it's still oftentimes a subject of derisive comments from visitors and residents alike. But we also know that when a city as great as New York received a gift from France in the form of the Statue of Liberty, for years, the city unified around the idea of putting her up on a pedestal on an island, you know, right outside of Manhattan. And for over 130 years, they've embraced it, and it's become an iconic part of the community. The medians on West Broadway are different than the medians on other roadways in our community, mainly because West Broadway developed in small lots and changed from housing to commercial use, where mom and pops, local people, could buy a little lot and try to develop a business and hang up a shingle and make a go of it here. And some of them made it big and stayed here, and some of them made it big and left here, and many of them had their dreams crushed on that road. We watched it. It's the nature of business. We open a business, we hope our neighbors will enjoy and pay for that which we produce, and sometimes it works and sometimes it doesn't. But the nature of this roadway puts us in a position where we have to recognize that its use is different than other roadways in our community. And the first thing I think we should ask ourselves is what the purpose of that road is. Why do we have roadways? And I believe we have roadways to get people and goods from where they are to where they're needed most. To improve the aesthetic look of it as we're passing along or preparing to trade with each other or visit is a good idea, but sometimes those ideas don't always fit. And to try to cram this idea into West Broadway, I think is a poor approach at unifying our people. I think this meeting has become divisive, it's created a lot of derision, and it will decimate business on Broadway. And I mean decimate in the Roman term. When the Romans came up with the word decimate, they meant to punish large legions of troops. Colonel Al, you might know this, and picked on one in 10 of the members of the legions. One in 10 of those businesses may be adversely affected by a loss in access to their business. And you can hear it from people. We talked about the studies that were brought about out of Utah and Texas. I read them, and there's good points and bad points in both. There's flaws in them, I believe. But we can look around town, and some of our businesses can see the raised medians that were installed on South Omaha Bridge Road. We watched Selenecks close, and BP close, and the Dairy Mark close, and Cal's gas station close. I could see if you'd signed your name to a note for a quarter million dollars or a half million dollars to start a business on Broadway, you'd rightfully fear the imposition that raised median might put on your business. And, win or lose, you know, on whether or not this raised median goes in, we have to consider what we can do to unify this city when we do receive gifts, and why it's important that we all recognize that we don't want any one part of this community to carry a steeper price for the greater benefit of all without compensating them somehow. And I hope that we don't lose this small flavor of what our community is and that West Broadway represents by putting a raised median in and watch those businesses disappear. And I've discussed with you, Matt, Mr. Mayor, about why Broadway looks the way it does. I know from 2000 to 2015, we've had an increase of about 60% of our households are now in the poverty rate that they weren't in. I know that we've had almost an 8% reduction in per capita incomes and per household incomes. In the West End, that might be because the population's aging. They have shifted upward. A lot of people have built houses in the 60s and 70s in the West End are now in their retirement years in there, and their incomes are falling off. Broadway represents a lot of what the West End represents right now. But it's not gone, and Broadway can change, and that's the important part about this street. It can change. Its commercial use can change. But we shouldn't force the change, not on the people who invested in West Broadway when no one else did. So let's make West Broadway work for those who made West Broadway work for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
You want me to sign this a second time?
I think she does, Don.
Oh. Too bad I could put you some diddle marks here. I've got a report here from the Iowa DOT. This is actually issued in '01, but it talks about continuous two-way left-turn lanes offer several advantages. I'm reading right from the sheet here. First, these two-way left-turn lanes remove left-turning vehicles from the through-traffic lanes, which can reduce delay to through-vehicles and can lead to reduction in rear-end and side swipe collisions. Second, these lanes provide spatial separation between the opposing lanes of traffics, which can lead to reduction of head-on collisions. And finally, and I know we heard last time that this is maybe a no-no here, but it says "Two-way left-turn lanes can also function as a lane for emergency vehicles," which I was also told that sometimes they do here, anyway. But there are several advantages to having that turn lane there, rather than, like I think I mentioned last time, if you've got a median there, in most cases, if you want to go to a business, you're gonna have to drive three to four blocks to get yourself turned back around, unless you pull a U-turn right there in the middle of the intersection and go back that way, which also can create some hazards. I don't know whether you've seen this report or not.
I don't believe I have.
Can we just submit that?
Yes.
Motion to receive and file.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
Pose same sign.
Work for Heartland Properties. My address is 23118 McPherson. And, give me a second here. I don't write as fast as some of the others. Okay. I'd like to start with going on record to say that I'm excited and wholly support the improvements that we're trying to make on West Broadway, improving the infrastructure issues, the street itself, and to make it look like a more attractive entrance to our city. You know, but at that same time, I draw the line at the medians, and as I'm looking at this resolution to modify eliminating all the medians, I would be wholly in support of that. The main reason I support eliminating the medians revolves around the businesses. Now, I have several clients that own businesses up and down Broadway, and as has been discussed many times before, the access and traffic patterns, the ability to get in and out of a business directly affects the success or failure of that business. And now that you've eliminated a lot of them in this most recent drawing, that's a good thing, except what it left was, it left a median in front of my client's business. And I don't think it's fair to pick and choose which business you're gonna allow access and which ones you aren't. So with that in mind, I would fully support making this change, eliminating medians, and adding other types of amenities that might improve the look of Broadway and improve the business environment and make it look better. I have been selling real estate up and down Broadway for a long time, and I really think that there's a lot of potential, a lot of opportunities for growth. Recognize how difficult of a problem you guys have trying to deal with this. And I appreciate the opportunity to be able to talk and that your willingness to listen to the people in this group and their concerns about it. The clients that I work with and represent have spent a lot of money improving their businesses and like to see some reward from that, and they appreciate the business they get from this community and don't want to be penalized, you know, for being in the location that they're at. You know, so with that in mind, I would support you eliminating all those medians.
Thank you.
Live at 2909 6th Avenue, which happens to be in the West End of Council Bluffs. And I'll fill this out. I'd like to start with, I'd like to start off just wondering why the council is not listening to the people that have an actual investment in the West Broadway corridor, the people that you're hearing speak at the last meeting, the people that are here today. Everybody is, you're listening to, is, has an investment in the West Broadway corridor like myself. I didn't just invest in a business on West Broadway, but as I said, I grew up and I currently live in the West End, so I'm a West-ender. And the West End affects me 100%. And I think that, as a council, that they should at least listen to the people that have a vested interest in the area that they're talking about changing. We keep hearing about different studies on the median impacts on businesses. The problems are, the studies are not from this area. One of the studies had a two-lane roadway that changed to a six-lane with a center median. Obviously, six lanes increase the traffic flow and doesn't compare to this project. Another of the studies had a new Walmart moved into the affected area that had a median. Again, Walmart itself would increase traffic flow and increase the sales data, and it's not the same as what we're talking about here. As with all studies, they should be taken with a grain of salt, as results can be skewed to favor either side, that they're not always comparing apples to apples. We are the seventh-largest city in Iowa with approximately 8.8 million cars traveling on West Broadway annually, yet according to the DOT website, only one West Broadway intersection is listed in the top 100 worst intersections. That one is listed 88th, while five other intersections in Council Bluffs are listed in the top 50. The only West Broadway intersection that made the top 100 was 16th and Broadway, and that was the one that was rated 88th. And it currently does have some medians. The only other one that made the top 200 of the intersections was 21st and Broadway. That ranked 149th, and we're not even discussing putting a median there. So if we're actually putting medians in for safety, wouldn't it have made sense to put a median that made the top 200 list? We keep hearing that West Broadway is stuck in the 50s. Nate keeps talking about the 1950s because of its five unbroken lanes. Yet, we just spent millions of dollars on a beautiful new area down at Metro Crossing, and it has five lanes wide with a turning lane, yet we're not comparing that to the 1950s. We're told that only 20% of Broadway will have medians. But if you are one of those businesses that that median is gonna go in front of, it's gonna affect me and those other businesses 100%. We just discussed the budget. Why don't we save a little bit of money for next year's budget, or the year after's budget, and not worry about having to take care of the medians? Medians are gonna be costly, no matter what. It's gonna take upkeep, unless we want them to look like the medians in the rest of the city, like down 16th Street or out North Broadway or wherever, and the medians haven't been taken care of. So if we want to cut the budget, maybe it's only $10,000, maybe it's $50,000, but that's something that'll be cut off the budget in future years. We don't have to worry about it. The medians that we're talking about only make up 10% of the entire project's overall aesthetics, 10%. And that's the only part that most of us here tonight are asking the city council to do away with. We're more than happy with the rest of the project, we just are unhappy with that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Martha Bruckner. I live at 17597 Turnberry Ridge. I am here as a personal citizen, not as a representative of the Council Bluffs Schools, but I do have some interest in the construction on the Broadway corridor. I had the good fortune, or bad fortune as it is, to serve on the stakeholders' group because I am kind of a stakeholder in that we have a school right on Broadway, Thomas Jefferson. I'm pleased that when people were looking at this plan and they had to pick high points, almost everybody picked the renovated Thomas Jefferson High School as a high point. And Todd Barnett, the principal of Thomas Jefferson, was here, but he had to leave for a family occasion. We're here to say thank you very much for your support of anything that would bring the Broadway corridor into the new century. And I, as you know, no doubt, have been involved in lots of changes in Council Bluffs in the last decade, and I can guarantee that anytime we try to do something different, it comes with lots of people telling us it's a bad idea. But at times after the fact, it's a good idea. I'm not convinced that one person here telling you that I think the corridor with the medians would not hurt Council Bluffs with everything there is right now to help people get around from, even I can find my way around because I have GPS that helps me find things. If I'm hungry, I think I'll find my way back to a restaurant. I can definitely find my way to the car wash of the beloved gentleman that I'm sitting next to back there. And we're training our students to be problem solvers. If they want to find someplace, they can find it. So as a lone voice perhaps tonight, I'm telling you, I think that the medians would, in fact, add some nice qualities to the entrance to our city, and I'd recommend that you vote against this resolution. I'm gonna sign my name now.
Thank you.
Yeah. Go ahead to sign in.
Sure.
Go ahead to sign in. Sign your name and address.
Okay. Ben Van Hooven, 507 North 27th Street. I'll finish later. I'm actually here to, I agree with this lady, I'm in favor of the medians. I know, I understand where the businesses are, where they're coming from, but I don't think you can put a number and quantify, I guess, the perception of West Broadway, you know, what kind of business that might bring, you know, if we get it looking nicer. So I'm totally in favor. I think people can adapt to change. I think they can figure... I think they can figure it out. I don't think you have people coming from out of state to get their car washed. I think they're probably from right here in Council Bluffs. I think they can figure it out, but I'm totally in favor.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Mark Mitchell, 5440 L Street. Operate Jimmy John's Restaurants on Broadway Street. And sitting here listening to prior information that's been provided, and what's really the objective on Broadway Street? And I think that if I were to summarize, obviously, it's prosperous businesses that are succeeding, and I think it's all of us to look at what's preventing that. And there's lots of pros and cons to doing this on both sides, and, you know, I think that there's a responsibility to look at things that could stand in the way of accomplishing our objective. And it's pretty fragile to operate a business on Broadway Street. And anything that could get in the way of that and possibly impact our sales 5%, 10% or even worse is something that could really get in the way and cause us to close our doors. And I just don't think any of us can take that risk. It's not really up to other people to make that decisions for us. And I know that I've experienced situations where one of our restaurants has declined in value, and you get appraisals. Oftentimes, those businesses are appraised on not only the top line sales, but also the net profit. And that goes into the land values and how much it's worth and things like that. It's hard for us to borrow money, also hard for us to sell the property and relocate onto a corner that we'd prefer to be on with an opening in the median. So back to what I'm saying, our objective is for Broadway to be successful and, of course, beautiful, but we can't afford for anything to get in the way of the success of our businesses. So please take that into consideration.
Thank you.
Bruce Kelly, 864 McKenzie Avenue. I went down and Roger and I had a good talk and stuff like that. There are some things I'd like to be, see changed in, and so would he to have these medians, but maybe more openings at certain places. I agree with that and everything like that. And I was going to where no medians. Then I was stopped at 21st and Broadway, heading east, about eight, nine cars back, and this car went right down the center lane from 22nd to 21st like it was his own lane and then turned the corner. And I'm sitting there, really, because I'm sitting there waiting until I get to the turn area where I'm supposed to be able to turn to go make a left. And you do see a lot of that, and you see a lot of people come out of these businesses and drive that center lane and down Broadway until they can merge into traffic. And it is a hazard to everybody that way. And like I did, I talked to Roger, and we did, we pointed out about six different things, and I wish that before it gets all drawn up, maybe some of these can be brought up, like 26th, maybe put a turn lane there, Walgreens on the west entrance, a turn lane down there. There was a couple other in 17th and Broadway, a turn lane, so they can get into Jimmy Johns and stuff like that. I don't know if that is too late now or not for this stuff to be talked, or maybe are we set on just this and nothing else?
Well, that's what this vote tonight would be.
If I may, as I understand the vote, it's the issue of whether this would amend the master plan and would remove the possibility of there being any. If it did not change, and I would give my assurance for the time I have left, as I read the current master plan, it does have them in there, but they are not set in stone the exact location in the plan, the concept of them being roughly about 20% of the streets in the plan. But as I read it, it's not set in stone that it'll be exactly to the square foot and that as we do each segment, that can't adjust a bit. I think tonight would remove the possibility, if it passes tonight and it weren't subsequently changed, that would prohibit us from having any medians at all. Is that a fair, I believe that's a fair statement.
And so that's, then I'd have to say that we'd have to go with the medians, and I hope that if we do vote for the medians, that in these segments, that you guys can talk these out and maybe, I know it's going to cost money, or maybe go ahead and okay it and then go over it again and make sure that we can get these few things changed to make this to where it is more accessible, just some of these businesses.
Bruce, correct me if I'm wrong, when we spoke down at my shop, you basically wanted a cut in the median where, so they could turn into the businesses?
Well, yeah, like on 26th, the median's going to go straight through, and you got Boost Mobile and that.
Subway, Boost Mobile.
And stuff like that. There should be a turn lane there, and then the end of, on Broadway, Walgreens has a lane drive coming in there. I could see a lane turning off of Broadway into that. And down there, like 17th, make it to where there'd be a turn lane or maybe even have a turn lane and keep that open so people can cross, but not, but one of the problems we have down on 16th is during rush hour, that backs all the way up to almost 18th. People are stopping and stuff. But, you know, like if we did have a turn lane that could go into Jimmy Johns or something like that, and there might be a few others that I, we really didn't talk about and stuff like that, but I could see that there should be some tweaking on it and get it and stuff. There's not always, that I always agree with you, and one of the deals is me and Al did agree on Playland not doing that, but now that it is, I'm 100% behind it. And that's, you know, I turn a page every time you guys do some. I've been disgusted with all of you, and then there's other times I'm for you. And I know Matt has said some words to me, and there's a few other people that have said some words to me and stuff like that. Yeah, but we're not supposed to agree on everything, but this is a project that's been going on for over a year, and a lot of people didn't go to these meetings, and I did. And then some, you know, I've been asked, why do I care? Because I don't live down here. Well, I want, I don't believe in north and west anymore. I gave that up a long time ago. And then they're saying about, you know, north 16th, those medians aren't in good shape. Well, I don't know. They don't belong to us. I don't, they do now.
Now they do.
But back then, they didn't, you know, and the state didn't care. So anybody want anything?
Thank you.
I'm Linda Spencer, and I live at 416 North 23rd Street. And I'm against the medians. I have been, like, just got active here in the last few months. I drove, I drive down Broadway every day to my granddaughters, to babysit, to the grocery store, to all kinds of church functions. I bet you I turn left off Broadway like probably three or four times on each trip because I'm going to True Value or I'm going back. And I'm thinking, you know, I was thinking, wow, if I can't turn on any street but 35th, 25th, or 16th Street, I'm going to have to whip around A, go down A, what, maybe to like 35th Street, back up, and I'll have to go to True Value. And, you know, that's a lot of time. And the people nowadays are like, basically, you're in a rush getting places, right? I mean, I'm a great-grandma now, but when you go into events with kids and everything, you're, you know, you're in a hurry to get places. And also, if there's medians there, and you go, if you're, not me, if you have a cellphone in your hand, you're going to be driving around and somebody's, you're going to be looking over there. I truly feel that there's going to be more accidents. And on 25th Street, you cannot tell me that the kids in the mornings going to school, if you put a median in there, you cannot tell me that the kids are not going to be jaywalking in a hurry, going across, jumping over medians, and the cars coming down the other way on Broadway aren't going to see them. And there's your safety problem. Someone could get disabled or even killed. So I, and I think the fire trucks, the emergency units, police, us people in the West End are going to be a lot more safer without the medians. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Hello, Chad Belt, Welcome Council Mayor. I live on River Park, and I just would like you guys to think about, about the medians and what they're going to do for West Broadway, possibly, making it not more free rein for people, more for caddling people one way and making the other streets more busier for them, and then as well as for your future council members to think about how you're going to withhold, withhold the budget to maintain the medians. And I don't know how long you council members plan to stay here, but hopefully for a long time, and you guys continue the good work in budgeting for that median upkeep and keeping it beautiful, as you say. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, just because a couple people have referenced it, we did an analysis on the maintenance of the medians. It's about 7,000 a year to plant them because they only take up 20% of Broadway, and the lady that got up further earlier talked about having to drive to 25th and then to 35th. And the medians are at five different locations, less than a block in length, and don't run, there's a misconception that the median runs the entire length of Broadway, which isn't accurate. Anybody else?
Since we got all that fun with the study sessions, mine's going to be really quick.
I apologize.
No, no worries, Matt. You're good. Jeff Ballinger, 12606 Greystone Court. First of all, for the third time, thank you to the city council for serving what you do is, like I told Mayor Walsh earlier, I wouldn't trade places with them, or you folks work a lot of long hours. I bet if you divided your pay by the amount of hours that you worked, I'm not sure where that would be as far as deficit financing goes, but be that as it may, I am against the medians. I put a lot of energy into this project for lots of different reasons, but I made notes so this will go very quick and I can go sit back down. One of the things that Dorothy Strobin used to say, who served on the council, I believe, before my father, because I've got a lot of friends, or some friends who are on the other side of the issue, including Martha Bruckner, who I've got a lot of respect for, is you can disagree without being disagreeable. And I think that's really important. Tonight, we turned in over 2,000 petitions, signatures. They weren't perfect. Mayor Walsh correctly pointed out, there's five medians. Some of the petitions said six. I don't know who put the ad in the paper. It's a nice-looking ad. We didn't. But I believe it showed four medians. So there's a little bit of disinformation. I'm sure it's all unintentional. I don't think anybody wanted to mislead the public, either in the, in the paper with this ad, and we sure as heck didn't. What we were just trying to get out at our small businesses to folks was, do you want medians on the West End or not? And if the answer is no, here's an opportunity to sign and to be heard. And over 2,000 people have made their voice known this evening, and that is, they do not like medians or they do not want medians on the west side of town. Your responsibility as council people, I guess, is to listen to the concerns for everybody, not a narrow bandwidth of people, but everybody. As I mentioned today earlier, to me, if I was sitting in your chair, I would come down to risk and unintended consequences. The unintended consequences of median, as a gentleman from Jimmy John's pointed out, and I've dealt with medians, as I've said now for the third time, this will be the third go-around with medians. Once on 33rd No Street in Lincoln, once on 156 and West Center in Omaha. At that particular location, right across the street from Eddie Morris, had a gas station, that's out. A gentleman from India bought it. He's out of business. And then, does anybody know like King Kong, the burger joint, you know, has the big gorilla with, he's out of business. So there's, I think, Councilwoman White asked a really good question earlier, and that's, what about the surrounding businesses? There's an example where on 156 and West Center, directly across from me, they're all out of business. So the unintended consequences of what Mayor Fahy did by putting that median there was it put three people out of business. The other unintended consequence, and I want to be clear and again reaffirm my respect for Chief James, is that we just have, we just agree to disagree on response times. I've researched it, I've talked to folks, and it would seem to me, based upon what we received from the folks at the Fire Hall down on the west side of town, there's some concern there. Now, I'm not the fire chief, and so, but I'm just sharing with you what we received. So the unintended consequences of potential delayed response time, the unintended consequences of potentially businesses being closed, these are all things that I would be taking into consideration when I make my decision, and my decision would be to vote no on the medians. I believe that we can, we can come close to having it all. We can really make Broadway look nice, we can aesthetically make it look good without hurting anybody, and we can still do business on Broadway. And that's why I would rise and ask respectfully, when the question comes this evening, that you would vote to remove the medians, and we can move forward on beautifying our city and doing business in Council Bluffs and voting for commerce ahead of beauty. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll sign that when I get done. Fire Chief Justin James, 200 South 4th Street. I did want to come, I know it came up today, and Councilman White asked me to speak a little bit on behalf of what many of you have seen in the newspaper and the letter that was written by the local. And so I wanted to go ahead and kind of reference the media, or the medians, and hopefully clarify a couple things that were stated, not only this afternoon, but at the last meeting, as I sat at home and watched it. I actually, after Mr. Ballinger and I talked during the study session, I went over, and I think there's a little bit of a misrepresentation of how many firemen are involved in this. So I'm, I'm still, even though I'm the brass, I'm still a dues-paying member of the union, and so I still have a great working relationship with my personnel. So I went over and grabbed the union minutes, which this vote actually occurred in November, and then again in December because of their shifts, they had to carry it over to the next month. There was seven personnel the first night of the meeting, and there was eight personnel there, eight union members, the second night. So 15 people voted on this out of 100 union firefighters. I walked across the street as soon as we got done with study session, I went upstairs to talk to the guys. I don't think the guys across the street are anywhere, and I'd recommend anyone stop by a fire station, ask them where Chief James's or Justin's loyalty lies. I don't think there's any question about that with my own personnel. And so I just wanted to kind of explain a little bit from a fireman's perception of medians in the letter. Firemen by nature, they love to be involved in their community, and you see it every month almost, that they're out doing charity work with stuff that has nothing to do on their off time. And they do this really with small groups, and those small groups make a huge impact in the charity and our, in the nonprofits in our community. Those same attributes can also cause them to voice their opinions on basically any issue. We often say in the fire service that firemen are kitchen table experts because in the fire in the fire service, everything in the world is on the table when you sit down in the morning or at lunch and talk about whatever issue it is, and that's issues that are local issues, the issues that are worldwide issues. You see, firemen by trade are problem solvers, that's what they do. They work the majority of their careers in situations where they don't have hardly any of the facts, and so does law enforcement. When we show up, we have very little facts to go on, and they must make a decision in pretty much a split, a couple of split seconds, of what they can do to better the situation and to help the victims or, um, anybody that's involved in the emergency. So they are constantly looking for the next problem, the next thing they can go out and solve. It's almost illness to some extent, and I'm, I'm, I'm pretty, uh, I was pretty ingrained into it, we're constantly looking for things to analyze and fix. And that really brings me to the issue of the medians and, and how they perceive things, and I, I know that one of the business owners either came to the station, or one of my firemen came to his business, but I don't, that's semantics, I don't really care, they had a conversation. And firemen being how they are, after that conversation, which the individual, I actually, I received this letter at the same time the council and the mayor did, and when I received it, the, I also had a note on it that said, hey, if you have any questions about this, call me. And, uh, it was, it was written, actually, the letter was written by one person, a firefighter, and, uh, I immediately called him and said, do you have some questions on it? Do you have, uh, some concerns? He kinda voiced some of them, brought up the fact that he'd talked to a business owner, and he felt like they needed to, to, uh, take a stance, at least, or at least voice their opinions. Um, so, not only did I talk to him, it just so happened that this, the last council meeting coincided with when I go around all the stations, um, and have captains meetings. And so I actually went to Station Two and talked to him, which is the West End Station on Twenty-seventh and Broadway, and I asked him, hey, what's your concerns? The vast majority of the people down there did not know that the letter had been written until it was posted on the refrigerator. Um, there was some guys that had some concerns. Uh, I don't, and I don't think that they're, uh, outside of basis, from a fireman's perspective, and I, I'm as guilty as this as anyone, uh, we view everything from the front seat of a fire truck, and so, I think some of their thoughts probably are legitimate. I think there'll be a time when we go to an accident on West Broadway and the median hopefully's there, and, uh, and it may be a pain for them to deal with it, or there may be a time when we're going on a call where somebody doesn't wanna yield, that happens all over the city all the time. Uh, I, I just wanna make sure that I'm on record saying this will have no impact on our over, these five medians will have no impact on our overall response time. And the way, the reason I know that is because in oh-four, oh-five timeframe, there was a young union guy, and, uh, then Chief Allen Byers made a standard operating procedure change that said that we will stop at every red light, every stop sign, and then proceed. And when that happened, the union went crazy, and you wanna talk about a real union meeting where you got seventy or eighty or ninety guys at the meeting upset with the chief, like there were some letters written, and, and we threw a fit about it, to be honest with you. And the reason Chief Byers did that was because, at the time, and we still see it a little bit today, there was a lot of firemen getting killed in vehicle accidents, or there was a lot of people being injured by fire trucks. You're driving a forty-ton fire apparatus, um, a lot of people have said, oh, you know, I see the firemen use the center lane a lot, I'd prefer that they don't. Um, they, I, I've done it myself, um, but the fact is, it's not the safest route, we're probably better off just to stay in the, the traffic flow and let people yield. Um, and so, ten years later, fast forward, now I'm the chief, believe it or not, and, uh, and so, today, ten years after that policy was in place, we are a minute better than the standard, a minute better. Our response times have done nothing but got better. So the reason I tell you this was because I was that young union leader that threw a fit and wrote some letters, I think the mayor was on the council then. Uh, I, I was wrong, I'm, I'm gonna be honest with you, I, I, I acted on emotion, because typically firemen, they, they are going to, if the facts aren't clear to them, and you're not constantly talking to them and giving them the facts, they just acquire the facts and they run with them and they solve the problem. And I think that's a little bit what has transpired here with this, this letter. I actually, I've talked to the entire executive board, I've talked to almost all my personnel since this letter was written, and, uh, if firemen were that overwhelmingly concerned about response time, or the fact this was gonna, uh, hurt the department, they would be here tonight, I'll promise you. We, I mean, we just came out of a collective bargaining bill that, uh, had some things in it that affected firemen, and, and the, the halls of Wilson Junior High were full of firemen, and if they're concerned, they're gonna, they, they are active, they love to voice their opinion. Um, the second, well, so, I just wanna articulate, uh, the facts for not only my personnel, but for the citizens and biz, business owners that are affected. I, I think a lot of you have probably been in your businesses as an inspector, um, and I want to see, I mean, obviously as a, as a public servant, I wanna see everyone succeed, and I want everyone to continue to prosper and, and pay property taxes so that we can keep, uh, keep firemen employed. Um, I think there's not any question that raised medians and reduction in curb cuts by any study you pretty much look at makes it safer for not only the driving public, but also the walking public. And I, I heard, uh, heard the, um, the young lady say that, you know, there's gonna be issues at T, Thomas Jefferson, those are issues we'll have to dress with, uh, the resource officer down there if they're skipping over a median. I mean, there's no doubt if you can force them to the, to the crosswalk that we're better off, safety-wise. Um, and I think some of those problems will be exceptions to the rule and not the rule. And, you know, firemen are very reactive, and I said that earlier, and so, we react to questions or problems that we proceed, and very little, we don't do as good a job of being proactive, and I think the medians will be a proactive approach to hopefully reducing some traffic, uh, problems in the West Broadway corridor. Um, you know, firemen adapt from pretty much, they've adapted over the years, and we will continue to adapt, us and law enforcement, if there's a median there, we're gonna go, we'll, we'll find our way around, we, it will not affect our response times. You know, we went from having nothing to do with medical care to probably being the best spot to get emergency medicine. We went from not knowing anything about chemistry to being the nation's response to chemical warfare. Um, we've continued to adapt, and I, I promise you that a median is not going to change our response platform in any way. I, I said earlier, we should let the firemen be the firemen and the traffic engineers be the traffic engineers, because I've heard from some of the same individuals I heard on this, that, you know, I can't believe we're reducing East Broadway to one lane at Canesville. It makes no sense, why would the city be that dumb? And every morning when I drive to work, I'm like, that's why we pay traffic engineers. That, that flashing yellow light and being able to turn, and the reductions in emissions and all the other good things it does for efficiency is, uh, is a great thing. Um, I wanna finish up just by touching on something that we talked about earlier, and that's super important to me, um, and that's talking about the budget and the funding for the services that we provide as a city. Uh, as the council and staff completely know, uh, we are at the cap of our eight-ten levy, and I heard Roger and, and, uh, and Councilman Riggenberg say, you know, we're concerned about what the future looks like, and, you know, and Councilman Sandow say, well, you know, it, at some point, we probably are looking at a tax levy increase if we don't do something. The way to combat the tax levy increase is growth. That is our only alternative. And the only alternative to the eight-ten levy, and for those of you who don't know what the eight-ten levy is, that we are capped at, that's what pays for police and firemen and personnel. We can't go any higher on that levy. It doesn't matter, we have to have growth every year to maintain services. And I heard during the last study session, you know, oh, people were upset that, you know, the city's always spending money and, and we're just, that is so far from the truth. Um, I, I'm gonna give you a, an example, 'cause I love to use police and firemen, 'cause they're dear to my heart. In nineteen ninety-six, we had a hundred-and-fourteen firefighters. Today, twenty years later, we have three times the call volume we did in nineteen ninety-six, and we have a hundred-and-seven firefighters. We have seven less firefighters doing the job today, and the police department is almost the exact same spread. We are doing more with less to conserve, we know firemen and police are expensive, so we're constantly looking for the next technology, the next way of doing it more efficiently to keep the tax, tax rate, 'cause we can't increase the, the eight-ten levy, we don't want the other tax rates going up, we wanna stay solid. The only way to do that is to, is to have growth. And to be honest, there's just a couple of things I wanna note for the council. The largest property owners in the West Broadway corridor are the sixty-two thousand citizens of our community. I'll say that again, the largest property owner in the West Broadway corridor is our citizens, and that has been done with investment from community development, from Iowa West, from PCDC, of the acquiring of property. Property that currently today is vacant. We need to do everything we can to promote growth in that area, and the reason I say that, and it's important to the citizens, is that growth in areas where there's already infrastructure is like getting double the money for your buck. If we keep going east and expanding, we don't have services out there, we will have to grow with it, or if we go south, we're gonna have to grow with it, we're gonna have to put sewer in, we're gonna have to put water in, we're gonna have to have firemen to go out there, we're gonna have to have police officers. West Broadway has all those existing infrastructure. It needs a little repair on the, on the storm sewer, but as far as police and firemen and road workers that actually cover that area, and water, it's all there. And that's crucial to remember from an economic development standpoint. We have to win on our west side of the town. Otherwise, everyone's taxes are gonna go up, we're going to have to cut services, there's no doubt about it, because price of business does go up. Even though we have less firemen today, the price still goes up. And so I just want, I wanted to remind everyone of that, and ask that, you know, you take that-
She was giving me the high sign on your ten minutes.
Oh, am I?
You were way over.
Am I, am I five over?
Yeah, pretty close, yeah.
Well, Jo-
Five thousand dollars.
Yeah. Hey, Jody and I go way back, so- Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
Jeff, come on up.
My name is Jeff Jorgensen, I'm at, uh, two-oh-one Shaley Circle here in Council Bluffs. Um, I was sitting back there, I wasn't really gonna get up here and speak until I heard the fire chief, uh, mention a few things. Um, I'm a old, uh, meat hauler for Farmland Foods many years ago, hauled, uh, drove an eighteen-wheeler into Chicago, got into Chicago quite a bit. Uh, so I, uh, delivered meat and, uh, and, uh, meat to a lot of, uh, places in Chicago that, um, had various, uh, ways to get there, uh, I, you know, I've seen a lot of, uh, city streets in Chicago, as you can imagine, uh, some of them had medians, uh, and so I'm gonna ask the fire chief, uh, he addressed the issue of response time, but he didn't address the issue of safety. Um, I did have to turn around in some places in Chicago, and it wasn't easy, and it wasn't safe, uh, in many instances. So where, safely, where would you turn around a fire truck, sir?
Sir, if you address the council, it's not a debate between you and the fire chief.
You bet, you bet. Uh, so that's my issue, uh, plus the fact, uh, in Chicago, I did notice that there are various ways to, uh, divide, uh, roadways, and not all of them are obstructive. Some of them have the appearance of a, of a median, but aren't necessarily a median, you still turn off that street. So I wonder if that option's ever been considered, so I'll leave it at, I'll leave it at that.
Thank you so much. Anyone else from the audience?
My name is Kirk Madsen, twenty-six-sixty Avenue J. You know, I'd like to begin this evening by making a few comments about the West Broadway corridor master plan that was approved by the council back in two thousand sixteen. The master plan was to provide a clear vision and direction for rebuilding West Broadway as an attractive front door to our city and to our community. The city and the Iowa Department of Transportation have been in discussion for over fifteen years on how to improve, how to improve the deteriorating roadway and conditions along West Broadway. It is also my understanding that a process took place involving city leaders, members of the community, business representatives, a design team of engineers, communication experts, landscape architects, and representatives from the Iowa West Foundation. What resulted was a plan that reimagines West Broadway as a very proud urban street. As part of that study, project challenges, project goals, and project objectives were examined while recognizing public safety and accessibility. The plan addresses the current high crash rate in pedestrian, by recommending changes like reducing the width and number of driveways accessing West Broadway, restricting pedestrian crossings to signalized intersections, and installing raised planted medians near key intersections, and thus, one of the topics while we're here tonight. You know, I've studied a lot of information, and like many people out here, I've read numerous studies, and I've really tried to gather as much valid information as I can based on the information that I've been given. You know, there's reasons for it, and there's reasons against it, and with that being said, I've drawn the following conclusions. It appears to me that the city has certainly compromised on the amount of medians along the two-mile stretch by reducing that from eighty percent to twenty percent for five areas. The project will now be done in phases over a five-year period, weather permitting, and could have been done in a shorter timeframe. This is not better for taxpayers, but as a concession for businesses along West Broadway, this decision was made, and I can respect that. Safety, it is an issue. Broadway has twice the number of accidents on it than other comparable roads in Iowa, with the same lane width and traffic count. Traffic engineers and studies will support that medians help guide traffic and can help reduce and eliminate some of the accidents. Managing access on a road can result in better traffic flow, fewer crashes, and an overall better shopping experience for neighborhoods. Also, it can actually spur economic growth and has the potential for re-increase sales and property values. Medians is a deterrent for business. You know, I know there's an argument out there that, you know, what is a destination business? What's a drive-by business? What's an impulse business? Location and access are certainly factors, but the most important factors that determine whether a business succeeds or fails are the experience of management, how well, how well customers are served, the quality of the product or service provided, the level of competition in keeping costs competitive. For those reasons, I would continue to frequent business, business along Broadway, whether there's a median or not. Finally, I've been a lifelong resident of Council Bluffs for fifty-plus years, and I really, really wanna see a beautiful gateway and corridor for our city. Nearly thirty million dollars possibly could be going into this project. I put my trust and confidence in the experts that designed the master plan, because they know a heck of a lot more than I do. In closing, I've also lived on the west side or the west end my entire life.
I'm with you, Dave.
Okay? I'm a west-ender, and I've had numerous discussions with my friends and neighbors, and yes, we are watching, and we appreciate all that has been done throughout the city, including Rivers Edge Park, the continued potential for growth at the riverfront, and we do wanna see what is best for all of Council Bluffs. And with that, I would encourage you to support the West Broadway master plan with the medians as proposed. Thank you.
Thank you.
I am standing.
Okay, my name is Barry Cleveland, and I live at fourteen-thirty-five McPherson Avenue, Council Bluffs. I'm here to- I'm here to speak in favor of the medians and the over, overall plan that was approved in October of two thousand sixteen. You may or may not know that I served as one of your Iowa Department of Transportation commissioners for twelve years. Every month during those years, I sat at two-day, two-day meetings, and we made decisions on transportation projects throughout the state. During that time, the seven commissioners presided over hundreds of projects, programming billions of dollars. I only mention this as I have firsthand experience in participating in the decisions that are long-lasting. Experience in participating in the decisions that are long-lasting and affect many, many people, just as you are here deciding tonight. It's serious business, and as a commissioner, I received two death threats during my tenure. Obviously, none were successful. I would advocate that the entire segment be reconstructed, should have medians for safety and efficiency, but it is also my understanding that the council has removed about eighty percent of the planned medians, leaving only those that are considered the most critical. I also understand that the project is scheduled out over five years or five phases. The citizens should be fully aware that stretching a project out longer than necessary is more costly from several different angles. The longer a project takes to complete, the more costly it becomes. Inflation alone will add approximately two percent annually, but my experience with other projects, the cost depending on the economy can easily increase by twenty to thirty percent. Additionally, there is no guarantee on the weather, and a project scheduled over five years can easily stretch to six or seven years, given an unlucky set of construction season weather patterns. Also, the cost to the businesses along the corridors are adversely affected as long as any segment of the road is impacted. People will change their commuting patterns, and along with that, their shopping habits. Continued declining sales during construction will cause severe hardship on businesses, and failures may occur. The timeline impact during construction will far outweigh the impact of a change in approach patterns into a business. Get in, do the job, and get out as quickly as possible should be a priority. Based on my experience and what I would like to impart to you tonight is, one, we should all trust and respect the process. The process is designed to involve all affected parties, receive their input, and deliberate, deliberate on the findings. If at all possible, everyone's concerns are weighed and accounted for in the design phase to as great an extent as possible. Secondly, we're building an orderly, efficient system and network that can be used by all and is cost-effective. Third, and most important, the system needs to be designed with all the possible safety concerns incorporated into it. Safety should be the prime determining factor. Accidents and fatalities not only affect the victims and families, but they eventually catch up to all of us collectively in the form of higher insurance costs and increased costs of redesigning the system to be safer. Based on statistics, you have all been presented, the West Broadway corridor, and you've heard this over and over, has over two times the average number of crashes on similar corridors. From two thousand ten to two thousand fourteen, there were three hundred and sixty-nine crashes. For the last two years, two thousand fifteen through two thousand sixteen, there have been another five hundred and seventy-four crashes. The trend is moving the wrong way on accidents along this corridor. Additionally, a quick check of the daily Nonpareil archives indicate there unfortunately have been two pedestrian fatalities on West Broadway since December twelfth, two thousand fifteen. No amount of aesthetics will improve the safety of this road. I also might add that the rest of the corridor, from the Broadway Viaduct to Interstate eighty, has some type of median incorporated into it. Finally, you are all elected to represent all of the sixty-two thousand citizens of Council Bluffs and to make the tough decisions when the job demands. Let's finish this quarter through our great city without further delays. It has taken at least twenty years to see this dream get this close to reality. In closing, I would ask that you vote to keep the plan that the council approved in October two thousand sixteen that would keep medians and create a safer, more efficient West Broadway for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Real quick to address some of Barry's comments. Safety, obviously, is a big concern to all of us up here. And, and talking at the study session this afternoon, we talked about safety a little bit, with reducing the left-hand turns, uh, on Broadway. And to me, and I would assume all these businesses up there here would agree with me, Hy-Vee is probably the busiest business on West Broadway. Probably has the most left turns. Well, there is not a median in front of-
My advice to you would be not to throw the baby out with the bathwater.
I, I would agree. I'm just, I'm just telling you, if the safety feature, perception, Barry, is, that is the busy, I mean, not perception, it probably is the busiest business on West Broadway. So, perception of these folks out here is, why isn't there a median if you're, if you're gonna say it's for safety? You should reduce that left-hand turn, the busiest left-hand turn.
I would incorporate all safety features possible, and this is the only ones that are on the table, so-
Right, I'm, I just wanted to address that. Absolutely, thanks, Barry.
I think there is, uh, there are two entrances into Hy-Vee, and there is a median in front of one of the entrances, which would be the, the entrance, the ingress and egress by the First National Bank.
Uh, good evening. My name's John Burns. I live at one fifty-one Norwood here in Council Bluffs. Uh, a lot of things have been said, and of course, I want to address just a couple of them. Uh, most importantly, I want the council to give consideration to the actual fact-based criteria that have been put in front of you with respect to, uh, the median issue on West Broadway. There's a couple of things. First of all, the safety issues. I'm not gonna reiterate all the statistics that you've heard, but it's important. Uh, second of all, as Chief James addressed, we've got an opportunity with this beautification program to really dress up the west side of Council Bluffs. And, and we, that's gonna drive promotion of the community and growth of the community, which is what we really need. And in addition, as he pointed out, uh, the sixty-two thousand people of, of, of Council Bluffs are the owners of most of that land down there. And finally, I want to take you on just a, a little trip to demonstrate some fact-based observations in terms of medians, uh, with businesses on either side of them. Let's start at the west end of the, uh, A Street Viaduct, as we call it, uh, Sixteenth and Broadway. On the right hand, there's medians there. On the white, right-hand side, you've got, you've got Burger King. On the left-hand side, you've got Buc-E's. And you've got those other businesses that extend to the east there. Then you move across and over the top of the A Street Viaduct, you come down, and now you're at Eighth and Broadway, and you, again, with a median. Uh, on the one side, you've got the, uh, the, uh, Hy-Vee Drugstore, uh, the Ace Hardware, the Firestone Station. On the other side, again, on the other side of a, of an approved median, you've got the strip mall that Brewskis is in, and that, again, you can't get across there. You take the next step down, now we're going into the next block, again, more median. And in the meantime, you don't see these businesses failing. You don't see them closing up shop. You don't see them filing bankruptcy and filing, and boarding up their windows. As you move down, now you're into the strip mall where the tanning place is. You've got a median there. Moving on down, you come down to the, uh, United States Post Office and Federal Courthouse. And that's on, on that corner. You move across the street, again, with a median, uh, either a controlled median or, or a raised hard median. You've got the Heartland Building, which, uh, houses the Nonparel, and you've got the Great Western Bank. On the other side there, you've got some more businesses, including CVS. Now, those people are relatively recent newcomers to, to, to that part of Broadway. And again, they knew full well, and you know, these people are sophisticated business people. They knew full well those medians were in place. As we move on further then, you get to a, another corner with a big, brand-new bank on it. Now, they knew full well, they were gonna, there was a left-hand turn issues there, and median issues there, and they went ahead and built a brand-new building there and didn't think that issues involving left-hand turns were going to be a problem for them. The other, as you move on east then, as you move down past the backside of the parking ramp for the, the downtown mall, uh, and you come across the, down by the Department of, uh, Human Services, and besides that, right beside it, is another commercial four- or five-story building with lots of tenants in it, doctors and other types of, uh, small, single-person types of businesses there. Again, we've got a median. Now you move your way on down to the Pizza King, uh, corner, and back in there, you gotta make a left-hand turn and a controlled intersection with a light to get to the Family Fair. And again, a relatively recent, uh, new person into that grocery store business in there, apparently, they were not concerned about not having an access across, uh, the Ca- Canesville in order to make a left-hand turn across oncoming traffic, up over the hill and start down the hill. And then you're there, and you come across Casey's. Again, more medians, and Casey's certainly is a sophisticated, uh, commercial retailer. They've been doing this for, you know, probably fifty years. They know what they're doing. They apparently didn't have any problem with the median at being a problem for their ongoing businesses. And of course, then immediately to the east there, you come across the, the mall that's got Baumgars and, uh, the Kmart in it. Again, you've got issues there where you can't just make left-hand turns across the on, oncoming traffic. So between the beautification issues that you've got, an opportunity to get nine million dollars to help dress up that west end, and then you've got the safety issues, which those statistics simply cannot be disputed. You could reduce the number of rear-end collisions, major, major and minor injuries, uh, to say nothing of potential property damage. And then you come down, and you see for a fact that you've got all kinds of businesses as you run west, I'm sorry, east on, on past the Sixteenth and Broadway, that are very successful, and they've got medians in the middle between the two of them. So with that in mind, with those fact-based observations, fact-based statistics, I would hope that the council would vote to, to, uh, over, to deny this motion to take the, the rest of those medians out, and again, give consideration to the entire population of the city of Council Bluffs. Thank you.
Thank you.
City council members and members of the community, my name is Chris Rochelow. I live at two three eight six seven Dogwood Road. The reason for my attending, attendance tonight is to talk about and show support for the planned raised medians that have, have been professionally planned, designed, and approved by the council on October sixteen. The number of medians has been reduced significantly from the original plan. The remaining five medians have been specifically designed and placed by a team of nonpartisan professionals based on equal spacing, adequate length, they meet an aesthetic standard, they help control traffic, and safety is a primary goal. Yesterday, Roger, in a conversation with you and also with Melissa at different times, we talked about the concern for businesses, and I can completely appreciate that. I'm very familiar with the location in Omaha that Mr. Bellinger is talking about on a hundred and fifty-six and Center. When I first moved down to the metro area, uh, probably seventeen years ago, my family and I lived at a hundred and fifty-six and Q. I use a guerrilla car wash. Sun- Sunday night was my night to get away, go, wash the vehicle. When the median went in, I still went to the guerrilla car wash. And the gas station across that Mr. Bellinger is talking about, you know, there's a lot of other things that went in to the failure of that business. There was a new gas station to the west about, you know, a quarter mile that went in, and there has been a lot of growth in the legacy development in that area. I also lived at one four five two-three Parker Street in West Omaha, on the intersection of a hundred and forty-fourth and Blondo. My oldest daughter at the time went to school at Ezra Millard. There was not a median there. Traffic was terrible, it wasn't controlled, and as Omaha continued to grow, there was redevelopment of that area. A median went in, it helped control traffic, it made the area safer. We felt comfortable crossing the street. Prior to that, we didn't feel comfortable. I think a key to this, with members that I've heard, we can't take away and make an argument about safety. All of us wanna do what is best for the community, safety being a primary goal. We don't wanna hurt businesses, but at the same time, I order from Jimmy John's all the time. It's a great place. I'm gonna go to Jimmy John's if the median's there or not. There's arguments, Mr. Byrne just made an argument about all the businesses that are from A Street to I eighty, and there are medians all the way along there. Trainer State Bank just put a four-story building together. CVS Pharmacy is opened up. There's a fairway. There's Casey's. There's multiple businesses that continue to thrive, no matter the location of the medians. Council Bluffs is a beautiful community. I didn't grow up here, but I've been here now for almost fifteen years, and I absolutely love it. There are so many great things that continue to happen with this community. Growth is key. There's been a tremendous amount of improvements. This is one of the last legs. There's a tremendous amount of opportunity to create raised medians, to beautify it, to protect the people of the community and help with traffic flow. A couple of questions that come to mind. You know, when did all this change? It was passed at one time. Now, the way I understand it, construction started today, and now there's a resolution to remove what's already been passed. When do we no longer trust professional architects, engineers, and professional land planners? It's a twenty-nine to, the way I understand it, it's a twenty-nine to thirty-million-dollar project. Twenty million dollars is coming from the state, nine million dollars from Iowa West Foundation based on the aesthetic values of it, the original master plan where there were multiple medians. This is an opportunity to enhance that area for all of Council Bluffs. I can appreciate if there's two thousand members on that petition. I also can appreciate the other sixty-two thousand members of the community to make it better for growth. You can make arguments about studies, but there's also studies that show that there's an eighteen percent increase in property value when medians and improvements have been made. What happened to doing what's right for the greater good? Businesses can thrive with medians in place. Not one of you, not one of you can argue against the enhancements that the raised medians bring. A master plan has been approved, construction has started, and now we're in the eleventh hour. You have an opportunity to change the image of Council Bluffs. This decision is not just a decision for today, it's a decision for our future, our community, our Council Bluffs. A vote no is a vote against growth in the future of Council Bluffs. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? And, uh, as they're coming forward, I just wanna remind people, uh, when, when you spoke, people gave you consideration and were polite, uh, so if you'd please, um, keep your comments to yourself for right now. Don't be laughing out loud. People gave you consideration when you spoke, and we'd appreciate the same for everybody.
Hi, my name's Jeff Durfus. I live at one oh four Cambridge Circle here in Council Bluffs. I've been here for forty-eight years. Been on Broadway, went and had the big, tall highway signs and stuff as a kid, McDonald's, Dairy Queen, all those places. I've seen Broadway change a lot. I've seen a lot of businesses leave, a lot of, uh, property taxes come off the tax rolls now that the city owns and empty lots. One of the problems I have with this project is everybody keeps saying, "Master plan, master plan, master plan." You know, I don't think there ever should be any council that can tie the future councils up from changing things. And so far, you guys have been graciously, uh, helpful of extending the process that you have gone through with, uh, the median project. Uh, I know that you guys all voted on this and give plenty of ample time for people to come to, and now you're extending that offer, and I wanna thank you for that. Uh, I don't think that, uh, anybody should, uh, say, "This is, this is how it is." You can't change it 'cause we voted for this ten years ago. So I thank you for, you know, changing that. I'm torn with the whole thing. I've talked to most of you, I reached out to all of you, and except for one, uh, got back with me. As a councilperson, going through the process, I know how frustrating it's gotta be for you. Spending three years on a project, then at the last minute get it, try it, taken away from you. But as a business owner, I can see how, uh, not being notified, whether, uh, you guys did the legal process. I know you did, 'cause I was at all the meetings and stuff. But, uh, the process needs to be changed. People need to get more involved with these projects as, as goes on in the future. I have, over the years, I've heard a lot of things coming out of the planning department. Don Gross, I know he's not here anymore, uh, saying, "Well, that's not on the master plan, we don't wanna see that." I see property sit and sit and sit when other businesses wanna come in, but that's not what the master plan wants. So, please, don't lock that up for future changes. You know, I wanna thank everybody for their time. One of the issues I have with medians, I don't like medians myself, you know, in, in this application. I'm not saying don't vote for them, or, or I'm not supporting one way or the other. But the problem I have is I go to Abbott, on Abbott, uh, to go to Epley, and it's wet all summer. I ride motorcycles, I drive nice cars, uh, I drive through water all the time. Canesville's the same way, uh, South Omaha, Veterans Memorial Highway is the same way. Uh, then you get into the maintenance problem. You get, uh, the Landahaw trucks or mohawk trucks, they park out in, into the lane, they got their hazards on, and then they got their workers spread all the way up and down the medians work, and that's a safety issue. down the medians working. That's a safety issue to me as well as the water, too. So, uh, I, I just, I just, I'm gonna keep it short. Other people's got stuff to say. I just want to thank, thank you for giving everybody the time to, to, uh, express their views and stuff and, uh, just take it all in consideration.
Thank you.
Hey, everybody. I'm, uh, coming at the end of the, at the end of time here, so I'll be quick. I'm Jeremy Eichman. Um, I've spoke here before. You guys may remember me. Um, I live in, uh, on one-hundred-fifty-ninth Street in Omaha. And, uh, I guess I wanted to address you guys one last time before this vote went through to, uh, bring up a few things that had, um, been at least brought to my attention in the past, specifically from you, Nate. I know that, uh, I just wanted to respond to you in the, in the comment you made to me prior, might have been two weeks ago, uh, in reference to medians, specifically in front of a business just like ours. And there was, uh, specifically, the exact phrase you used was, uh, the, the gentleman in Lincoln, you made comment to that they, their property value had gone up as well as their sales. That's actually not true. We spoke with both Brent and Lauren today, and neither one of them had anything nice to say about the median. They were completely against it. Their sales have not gone up. I can give you a figure-
Could you give me the owner's name? Because that's not who I spoke to. I'd be glad to speak with you afterwards.
Absolutely. Uh, do you want me to give it to you on record here now, or do you want to talk about it afterwards?
Whichever you prefer, sir.
Okay. Uh, we spoke with, um, Brent Bunce and Lauren Prescott. They both have Jimmy John's in Lincoln. Um, another, another business owner-
Are they the owner of the?
Yes.
Okay.
So I'm not sure who you spoke with, but we spoke with the owners. We went through corporate to make sure that we were talking to the right people as well, didn't want to, because obviously we're not closely affiliated with them, even though they are a stone's throw away, but-
Sure, we can do that.
And then in regards to another, another business owner who had experienced the exact same thing, um, you know, a very large Jimmy John's franchisee with, with, you know, locations in multiple states had this happen to him in another city, same type of scenario where he was in a, a undeveloped area of a median, and then they put a median after the fact. So his business was existing, was working out well. His, his business is down six percent in sales after the first year, and they're projecting more loss next year. So, you know, I heard, you know, asking for facts, these are facts. Those are, those are absolute facts, based on people in our industry that we talk to on a regular basis now. So that's what I wanted to bring forward. You know, when you're comparing, uh, the last gentleman spoke, uh, comparing that, you know, there was new development on the east side, uh, all these businesses that are thriving. Uh, if you look, you have Little Broadway to the south, you have, I can't remember the name of that road, to the north, it almost acts as a frontage road. That's not the same thing. We don't have frontage roads in these, these medians. And granted, they're not medians that cover the entire West Broadway corridor, but they're large enough to the businesses that are, that are there. And I've driven it almost every day to make sure that I'm not, you know, being too dramatic here, but, you know, ta- take a left on Sixteenth and then go down to Avenue A and try to see on which road you drive by, which business you intended to go visit. It's, it's far enough away that it's not just, uh, you're not, you're not cutting through alleys, and you surely could, but no business owner's gonna want that. I don't think the city wants a large amount of traffic coming through there. And on the other side of it, you know, we're gonna have, you know, a Cisco truck every day, just our business. We're gonna have delivery trucks every day that come down there to bring us product, that are gonna have to make a one or two-block loop. But that's just our business. What about the rest of them that have delivery trucks? And now you're forcing them to come down Avenue A, which is residential and where kids play and where everybody else comes out. And I know we're talking about safety and, and other car accidents, but there's a safety factor when it comes to commercial traffic, customers, commercial trucks, and all the things that go down Avenue A. And yeah, I know, it's, it's two-way now, and so according to you guys, that's gonna be safer. I don't know if that's gonna be better if you're gonna put commercial traffic on it that have to backtrack to get back to the businesses. So there, I'll be quick, I won't talk forever. I know it's been a long meeting, so if there's anything anyone asks, you certainly can, but that was my two cents on the facts that you wanted from me before.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. Anybody else? Anyone from the council?
I'd make a motion to deny the resolution to amend the Broadway master plan and keep the original plan in place.
Second.
Is there a discussion?
Um, I would just like to add a few comments. I mean, I was obviously for the medians to begin with. I thought it was a great idea. Our intentions, I think, were right for safety, to increase the image, you know, bettering the town, and just really making that part of our community look better. I will say, I was surprised to hear from so many people recently because we did have our process in place. And in hindsight, it would've been nice to have all this feedback back then because we did go through this and we came to declusion. But, I mean, I'm not gonna say because you're coming late, it's too late, because I think that's unfair, too. Um, I've heard from a lot of community members that are in favor, and even more probably that are not in favor lately. But almost more important to me are the businesses that are gonna be impacted, and it's a larger number than we initially thought. Some of you have spoken it publicly, some weren't as comfortable doing that and sent private messages, and I can fully understand that. To me, you're the ones that are really, truly invested in that area, and I understand that. I can completely understand. My dad's a small business owner. I mean, it's scary to have to worry about your own money. So as much as I really want to see that part of Broadway become better, become beautiful, become safe, I do think with other improvements, with the streetscaping, with the stamped concrete, there's a lot of things we're still doing down there. This is a small piece of the project. I think we can continue to do it. I think we can still make a great Broadway without really that fear of impacting you guys. And I have heard from several places in Lincoln, a few others that, businesses not even here tonight that called me and said it really did have a negative impact. So that's concerning to me. So I just wanted to tell you all, thank you for all the time you did spend talking to us. It does make a difference. I know a lot of people said it doesn't matter, we've already made our minds up. That really is not true. So I just hope everybody realizes that.
This afternoon in the, in the study session, when I spoke with Public Works Director, uh, as well as the city engineer, Matt Cox, we talked about, we do, we do have an alternative for, without the medians, and that, that would be phase one. Phase one has a number of aesthetics that nobody here even mentioned. We're, you know, we're doing pedestrian lighting, decorative pedestrian lighting, decorative fencing, uh, the stamped concrete, uh, the center turn lane will look different. Uh, Jody, if you could pull it up, that'd be great to show them. The, the center turn lane will look different. It will have a different look. It'll have a different feel when you drive on it. The two, the travel-through lanes on both sides, traveling east and west, will be a full-length or a full-depth asphalt. They will be black. The center turn lane will be a gray stamped concrete. It'll be a different color even. So that runway, or as some people refer to as just a block of concrete, that will have a different look. Can you pull the, the next one up, Jody? Just to, uh, like, one more down. Next one down. Right there. So it will look, uh, similar to that. Again, it's on paper. It's gonna look different on, on concrete and the, on West Broadway, but we do have, uh, an alternative without the medians. And, and West Broadway, a, a young lady called me today, and she said, "Is, is phase one not gonna be aesthetically pleasing because there's no medians?" And I said, "No, it's, it's gonna look great." You know, that, it's, phase one's gonna look phenomenal. We're excited about West Broadway. Everybody wants West Broadway to be improved. We all want our community to be more beautiful. Uh, we, personally, I want everybody to be successful. I think there's room for everybody. I want other sign companies to be successful. I truly do. We all help each other. We all have different things that we're good at. We can grow this community and make West Broadway a, a beautiful part of our community, aesthetically pleasing, uh, and, and have it, have it a beautiful entrance, just like phase one throughout the entire West Broadway corridor.
Of course, all this is dependent upon, of course, that, uh, the various funding sources on a change would continue to contribute, and we could not presume to speak for them. And my concern would be, they would have every right, particularly the funder of, of nine million, of the twenty million coming from the state, nine million coming from Iowa West, they would have every right to reconsider, uh, their contribution. And, and I would hope that they would still contribute, but they'd have every right not to. It is a free country, uh, I think, still. Um, and so a lot of these other aesthetic improvements that you speak of, uh, there may simply be no money for. So I think it's important for people to understand that, uh, because there are consequences to every choice we make, good and bad. I think it's important, though, to remember that in the petition, many folks have signed, including some of my relatives on the west end. Uh, there are some things I think it's important to know that, that I told them that simply are not true. And I have the online petition, a screenshot of it in front of me. Uh, the original proposal was to build eighty percent medians with trees. It was reduced in the public input process that, for some reason, many people chose not to take advantage of. It's a free country again, so I think, uh, didn't choose to become involved with. But as part of that process, there were concerns that individual businesses would not be seen, that it would, some sightline issues, uh, that it would be too intrusive. So they were reduced from eighty percent to twenty percent, with no corresponding reduction in anything businesses were to receive on that street, including the five-year extended construction phase, which every other business owner in the community is subsidizing the businesses on that street. Uh, it's unprecedented. We've done that for nobody else. Uh, looking further at the petition, "Left turn access will be unavailable to many businesses." Well, the medians will cover twenty percent of the street, so eighty percent of the street will not. Many as twenty percent, that would mean four times as much must mean quadramany. Uh, so that statement is demonstratively misleading at best. Uh, in addition, each turn lane will only have three to four car lengths at intersections. Well, that's true even under this plan. Uh, removing the medians doesn't change the turn lanes, um, uh, at intersections where most people would presumably turn onto streets. Uh, the proposal will also turn Avenue A residential street into a two-way street. That is true. Uh, thus increasing traffic. No, that's demonstratively untrue. If you look at any area where a street is one-way, two lanes, people will go faster. In fact, some people refer to it in the vernacular as a freeway or a speedway. I know myself, I will own up to it, will go much faster on a one-way street than I can if traffic's coming directly on towards me, as a true residential street would. It'd slow it down, it would increase property values, because quite frankly, it's a detriment to me because, uh, I live at the very start of West Broadway, uh, the very eastern edge of it, at what would be Second Street, but is called Park Avenue since eighteen-eighty-three, but it is West Broadway. I live on that, and when I go down to West Broadway, you know, currently on Avenue A, it's a street that allows me a straight shot in anyone else in the center, like myself, or on the east, to bypass the west end and get to Omaha or back, depending on which direction I choose to go. It really doesn't encourage me to stay in the west end. It doesn't encourage people to buy houses on the street. It's a freeway for people on the east. So being against restoring it to residential is actually anti-west end. It benefits people on the east. Doesn't really benefit you. Uh, as to the allegation that parking would be removed on Avenue A, that's a lie. There is no proposal in any of these plans to remove any of the parking. That is simply untrue. If you look at the plans, the, the individuals for, uh, the statement indicate, "Well, the plans could change." Well, you could say that we decided to make the street painted in purple polka dots. And you could say, "Well, the plans could change, and we could make the street purple polka dots, so, so my statement would be true." That's silly. And it's no less silly to say we're removing the parking. It's a lie. So if you look at all of these things together, and individuals were told that if they signed the petition, that they were supporting small business, the, the details apparently were not important enough to tell many of the people, including some of my relatives, uh, who signed that petition. And in the end, ultimately, what we have here tonight is a small group of people who are very vocal, who may very well get their way at the detriment of everyone else in the community. And I chose to be elected to do what I thought was right, not stay here a long time. And I think that that's the standard by which we all are judged in, in local history, whether we judge ultimately in the end what's the right thing, not which is currently most convenient. And so I do not think in the end this is best for the city, and if that means my time in this chair is shorter, so be it.
Hey, just respectfully, I think we all gotta, do what we think is best for the community. And you just said that you are. I think we all are, and I would include you in that statement.
And, uh, when, uh, when we originally considered the West Broadway corridor plan, um, Mr., Mr. Sandow took some heat for having the audacity to go out and ask some business owners what they thought about the corridor plan. And since then, uh, Mr. Ballinger has spent a lot of time and effort and resources, as a lot of other folks who participated in that petition drive, to go out and actually ask people who live and work, uh, along the Broadway corridor, what their desires were. And, uh, and the petition's been impugned. The motives of those supporting the petition have been impugned from time to time. And, okay, we're big boys, and we, we do what we think is right for, for the community. I want to be very clear in that when you, uh, when you elect us to, uh, to represent you, you are electing us to represent you. And that involves listening to you. And I was not elected by the Iowa West Foundation. I was not elected by an engineering firm. I was not elected by a group of experts who want you to understand that they know what's best for you. What I do have an obligation to do is to listen very carefully and to respond to the people that did sign the petition, who have written to us, who have expressed their views. And I kept careful tabulation as best I could as to which views were coming from people that actually live and work along that corridor. And by my, by my counting, the response has been overwhelming. And in the end, I have the obligation to listen. And with that, uh, I guess I'll, I'll ask for a-
I haven't had an opportunity to speak, Councilman.
No, I'm not, I'm not cutting off discussion. I, I just had a point of order. I can raise that after-
Yeah, I would, yeah, if you would. I would like to go ahead and, um, I haven't had my opportunity, and I have a motion on the table. So, um, this is what I would like to say. First of all, I'd like to start with when, um, a councilperson says we have to listen. We do. We have to listen to everybody. We don't, uh, just listen to one segment. So at the last council meeting, um, it was stated that, uh, some of the council people hadn't heard from people in favor of it. So we've had two weeks, uh, whereas now I would say the people opposed to it have since, uh, October of last year to bring this back. Um, the people in favor of it and the people opposed to it, when the emails came in, I put them in separate email boxes, so I would know, opposed and favor, since the day after our last meeting, started that day. And, uh, my email box is exactly even, dead even, on how many people contacted me in favor and how many people contacted me opposed. And this is what I tell you, is that it happens a lot when you're on council. Sometimes you have to go a little further and do a little more research and be a little more involved. When the stakeholder meetings started, the city engineer sent out an email to all five council people and asked them, "We need two council people to be involved in these stakeholder meetings." And so, you know, I thought, I'm always at all the meetings. I'm always involved in everything. I'm gonna step back. We can only have two people. We can't have a quorum there. So I waited two weeks, and I called the city engineer, and I said, "Which two council people stepped up to do this, to be at those meetings?" Nobody. I said, "Well, would you send it out again?" I really think that it's only fair to give them an opportunity because I'm involved in every committee, every board. Waited two more weeks. Not one person stepped up. So I went to every single one of those, which cost me money, too. See, I have a private business, too. I'm such a small business, it's only me. And every time I go to those meetings, it costs me money. There was a website set up. There was a Facebook page set up. It was in the non-Burell like three different times. It was on the evening news. Mailers did go out to businesses. Now, whether some people didn't get them, like if the owner didn't get them because maybe the mail gets sorted by a manager, I don't know. But we, mailers went out. So we go through this entire process. We hold a public hearing, and we have a city council public hearing, and city council votes in favor of it, understanding it's planned, plans change, yes. So this goes on. It passes in October. So it goes on months. Not a word is said, not a word is said. And then we're getting ready to let a contract for engineering. Nothing to do with medians. Let a contract for engineering, and a bunch of people show up thinking we're voting on medians. No. So Councilman, uh, Sandow brings a resolution to vote on medians. Fine. I understand, you know, that's his prerogative. But what I would say is, is that when you get involved from the beginning, when you take time off work and you go to the meetings and you read all the plans and specs, and you pull the studies because you are worried about these issues, when you do all of this as an elected councilperson, that's a job you're supposed to do, and that's when you're supposed to do it, not two years into a plan, after it's already been voted on, after it's already been passed. And to liken running city business to a child's birthday party just blows my mind, because I don't care if you gave the cake to the kid at a birthday party. This is a city we're running. And so, yes, I am upset that it looks like the medians aren't gonna go in, but what I also understand is this plan can change again. So we will have an election, depending on how that turns out this fall. There may be council people that want the medians back in. So I would say, probably, folks, this isn't over, because in the past, generally what happens is the council tries to support- happens is the council tries to support what the final vote is. They, very rarely do you see this done, I don't know, you go way back in history, I don't think you're gonna see this done very often, we, even if we lose, and I've lost several times, we try to support whatever ends up being voted, but that's not what happened. I would also say that typically, there's been an awful lot of, um, leeway given here, because in the past, if you voted against something, you could not bring it for reconsideration. You can't do it, it's, it's Robert's Rules of Order, cannot be done. So for Councilman Sandow to bring this resolution, when he voted against the master plan and made it perfectly clear his vote was because of the medians, for him to be allowed to even bring this resolution and have it stand, little surprising, but at the same time, okay, latitude. Um, there should have been a motion at the last city council meeting for this public hearing to even take place tonight. Motion forgot to be made, but okay, we'll give a little latitude. But I'm gonna tell you, I've been doing this for six years, I've shown up at every single meeting, every steep, single strategic planning meeting, doesn't matter what it is, I'm there, and I'll tell you, most of the time, I'm the only one there. So I'm not gonna give any more latitude anymore, it's been a year and four months. I really believe that if you wanna be involved in the change, if you wanna be involved in Council Bluffs, it means being involved in the planning of it, not just the tearing down of it.
Are you telling Nate to come too, then?
Yes, I'm saying it to everybody.
Okay, 'cause you're staring right at me.
I'm staring at you because you're the one that brought the resolution to change, and when I say the leeway, I am staring at you, because leeway was given allowing you to bring this resolution, leeway was allowed, given to you when you didn't bring the motion. There's been a lot of leeway because you're a new council person, and what I'm saying is, this far into the process, you're not new anymore, you have to know Robert's Rules of Orders, you have to know that you need to be at these meetings and you need to understand this before the vote passes. So I, I guess what I'm saying is, just because this vote tonight may not go my way, it's happened before, doesn't mean it won't come back again, because I assure you, if we get new council people on this council and we have support for it, it will come back again.
Well, I would tell you, Sharon, that when we all ran, I think we all knew it was going to cost us money.
Mm-hmm.
I had that conversation numerous times, I do a lot of work for the ci- I used to do a lot of work for the city.
So did I, before I ran.
And, so I, I don't think that, I think we knew that, I don't think we have to tell anybody that, I don't think we need to say that. I mean, i- if you, if we didn't know that, we wouldn't have ran for office.
Oh, and that wasn't directed at you, I had several business people say, you know, "Well, I couldn't be at those meetings, it cost me money." Well, it's your business being impacted, that's who I was directing that at, not you.
I'm, well, I just wanna clarify, and I, I will tell you, we all spend numerous, numerous hours, some on more things, as I said, we all have different expertise. Nate spends a lot of time with the neighborhoods. I, I don't, I spend a lot of time with the businesses. Nate spends less time with the businesses, I would say.
That's true.
So, I, I, we just have different, different things that we focus on.
But when we're talking about something this big, when you've been asked to serve on these things-
And that Broadway corridor plan in October, we all were assured, i- is a plan, it can be changed, I said that ten times, it can be changed.
It absolutely can be, it absolutely can be.
And I agree, if, if you wanna bring a resolution forward, and there's different council members and you have the support, I, obviously, I mean, we could go on and on, I mean, that's-
No, I mean, I just wanna be sure that you understand the latitude you were given in this whole thing, as far as protocol, Robert's Rules of Order, the things that should have been done, that you should know you have to do. I want you to know this, because the latitude was given to you this time, and I expect and will demand the same latitude come January, if there's enough council people to support another amendment. I just wanna be clear, 'cause you'll still be on with us, so I wanna make sure that you understand, I'm gonna expect that exact same latitude given to me.
Of-
Of allowing me to bring a resolution to make a change after I voted against-
Oh, absolutely, I, yeah.
Will suspend Robert's Rules.
Well, Al could have brought this forward if, I mean, if-
Yes, he could've, absolutely.
Absolutely.
But he didn't, you did.
And I offered to co-sponsor, by the way.
Why didn't you vote against it when it wasn't an election year, I'm curious?
Yeah, that is curious.
You voted for the plan when it wasn't an election year, but this year, you voted against it.
Okay, I'm happy to answer that.
Please do, I'm curious, because you do seem to-
Well, we're happy to hear the answer.
You do seem to change your vote depending on whether it's an election year.
Your whole attitude depending on election year.
Let me repeat, let me repeat very clearly what I said when this plan was before us last October.
And please include in that how you voted, sir.
Fine, I voted for it, and I explained why. I said it was very important to keep this project moving forward for the community. We need West Broadway rehabilitated and improved. At that time, Mr. Sandow was being criticized for bringing his comments to the medians to the forefront. When we had the public hearing, I got an earful from the people who attended that public hearing about the medians. And when we were debating and discussing that particular resolution, I made it very clear that I shared Mr. Sandow's concerns about the medians, and that we needed to have a further discussion as those plans move forward. Now it appears for many that we no longer ought to be having that discussion, and we do need to have that discussion as the two thousand people who signed those petitions have asked us to, to have.
And we're having that discussion, but what I would say to you, as you stood up the first year when you were running for senate, and said West Broadway looked like Detroit.
Yes, because of the government, because of the government taxing this city into oblivion.
Really, 'cause you were walking down Broadway, pointing out how bad it looked, and said it looked like Detroit. And you want it to stay that way, because as long as it stays that, oh, just, come on.
I'd make a motion to-
Call the question, call the question.
We gotta-
I got, call the question.
Motion to call the question.
Second.
I'll repeat the motion, um, there is a motion on the table, the motion on the table is to deny the resolution, and we'll vote on that motion, and if it doesn't pass, we'll entertain a new motion. The, the motion on the table is to deny. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Roll call, please.
Well, I think, no, it's gonna come out.
Roll call, please.
I'll second that as a courtesy.
All right.
Thanks, Nate.
Madam Clerk?
Greenberg?
Nay.
Sandow?
Nay.
Watson?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
I would make a motion to amend the resolution to read that all medians be eliminated from the plans of the West Broadway corridor master plan, and that future phases be consistent with the design of Phase One.
Second.
Is there discussion?
I think you may want to qualify your motion, because the plan area encompasses the existing median, unless you intend to remove it too.
Dick, can you confirm that today we, uh, the West Broadway-
It's amended not to remove the existing median.
The existing median is not in the stage of-
Make that amendment, yeah.
I believe it wasn't in Stage One, but I believe it's encompassed in the entirety of the master plan, is it not?
According to Matt Cox, earlier we asked him, he said Phase One does not include-
No, but, but the master plan encompasses more than Phase One.
Uh, make an amendment to not remove the, uh, the entrance-
Existing median.
The existing entrance on the West End of Council Bluffs.
Is there a second?
There's no median in Phase One.
I'll second that. All right, we have an amendment to the original motion, um, any further discussion?
Roll call, please.
Is this on the amendment?
Are we, are we still discussing, or have we called the question on this as well?
I think we could discuss it if we wanted to, uh, uh, we are, are we on the amendment?
It's on the amendment to not include the existing median. Okay, and, uh, and this continues, uh, our discussion as to how we came to the conclusions that we, that we did. And it was, uh, it was previously observed that only a single council member bothered to show up for the, for the meetings or volunteered to be part of the discussion on this. Uh, I raised my hand during that, because I did volunteer, I emailed back a response on that, and I heard nothing. I wonder why. In fact, I even showed up at one of those meetings, and I was not invited, but I came anyway. The public was invited. And not to that particular group.
Stakeholders' meetings, and he did show up for one, he stayed about fifteen minutes.
Ah, your, your clock is a little bit slower than mine, but notwithstanding, uh, my point, my point is that at that meeting, uh, the mayor's chief of staff was asked whether or not medians were going to be in the final version, and she said, "Well, nothing is decided, but yes." So I suspect that, that, you know, that, that this decision was made some time ago, and that's why I'm supporting this, this amended resolution, because once again, we, we have a responsibility, that Roger has, has graciously accepted this amendment, uh, in order to, that we don't have Mr. Watson coming back asking for, for the medians going to the freeway to be removed, okay?
And, and Nate, I guess to change it, I, I don't know if I can change it again. Uh, if, if you wanna-
Just, just clarify what one motion is, call it one motion to amend.
One motion to amend the resolution-
Yep.
That all future medians be eliminated from the plans of the West Broadway corridor master plan, and that future phases be consistent with the design of Phase One.
And the key words in that are future.
And so my question on the amendment is, if, if we are about consistency and medians are plain awful for, for West, West Broadway-
I'd support you to take that one out as well, then.
I don't understand why some than medians are, are more equal than others.
Do you wanna take that one out?
I don't wanna take any of the, I've already reduced by fourfold in the compromise that was already approved, but I don't understand the inconsistency in your approach. It would seem you would like the benefit of, of no further, but without the pain of removing the ones that people already like.
Nate, to be fair, there are no businesses that are impeded by that median.
No, but there's sixty-three thousand people who might be upset and might notice if the medians disappear, if they're disappearing where they would notice.
Okay, well, my-
I'm asking you if you have the courage of your conviction and if you're consistent.
To, to, to take that median out? Is that what you're asking me?
I'm at, I would seem to me, under your logic, it should come out, all of them.
If, if you make a, if you bring a resolution to retake that median out, I will support you in it.
You just made an amendment I'm speaking on to do that, and I don't support taking them out, but, but-
Oh, that one specific one is what you're talking about.
I would think any existing median, under your, the way you phrased your amendment, would have to be removed.
Dick, can you just clarify, the Phase One that I am referring to, consistent with the design of Phase One, is thirty-fifth and Broadway, wet, east, as Matt Cox stated this afternoon.
East of the existing median.
East of the existing median, so Phase One does not include the existing median according to legal.
Well, I, yes, but my point was broader, we're amending the plan, which is more extensive than just Phase One. It's the entirety of that corridor, which would include the pillars.
Yeah, the motion to call the question. Is there a second? I'll second. Is there a discussion?
Yeah, now, I don't, are we just voting on the amended resolution or the whole resolution?
We're voting on whether or not to take a vote. Pass, pass the resolution as amended.
We're, we're voting whether to close off debate on the amendment that would remove the median, but not the bill in chief.
Dick, can you clarify?
Whether or not we're gonna vote on it or not, is that correct?
Yep.
I believe so, yeah, because he called the question, yes.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
All right, uh, um, the, um, resolution as amended, um, that Roger proposed and Melissa seconded.
I think we're on the amendment, I think we're on the amendment, whether the amendments-
I thought you clarified the-
I did, Dick asked me to clarify.
Clarified amendment that Roger just stated would be-
Oh, I, I wanted a separate vote on the amendment, I'm sorry.
I, I clarified this is-
Oh, but then be able to vote on the bill in chief, if the, whether, if the amendment passes, then I would vote on the bill in chief with the amendment, if the amendment didn't pass, I'd vote on the bill without the amendment.
We, we need to vote on the, we have a proposed resolution in the packet.
Yes.
We need to vote on an amendment to change that resolution to reflect the, what Roger was just saying, as far as clarifying.
So, so we're voting on the amendment?
Amendment.
Okay, thank you.
That all medians be eliminated from the plans of the West Broadway corridor master plan, and future phases be consistent with the design of Phase One.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
I concur.
Sure, yes.
Any further discussion?
Could we have a roll call, please?
Ringenberg?
Aye.
Sandow?
Aye.
Watson?
Nay.
White?
Nay.
Ed?
Aye.
All right. Thank you all for, uh, spending your evening with us.
No, wait, no, we have to run the bill in chief as amended.
One more, we got one more vote.
You got one more vote, folks?
No, it's all, it's not really over yet.
That, that added-
You might have to-
Now the resolution, that's the lead.
Now the resolution-
The amendment was added to the bill, now we have to vote on the bill as amended.
Okay, resolution as amended.
Motion to approve the resolution as amended.
Second.
Any discussion?
Roll call, please.
Ringenberg?
Aye.
Sorry?
Sandow?
This is a resolution as amended.
Aye.
He can give you the language.
Watson?[1749.36]